Calling me in order for the November 29, 2022 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Dixon is on her way. She's just slightly late, but the rest of the council members are in attendance.
Thank you. Going on to current business, first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilman O'Neill, do you have any clarification regarding these items? Councilman Duffield. Councilman Brennan. Councilman Avery.
None.
Mayor Pro Temblom.
I have none.
And I have none as well. Okay. I want to say session item number two. It's a proclamation recognizing Bill Whitty and Kyoko Sakamoto for the support of the library lecture hall, clearly one of the biggest gifts in the history of Newport Beach to the city. I'd like to read a proclamation. If Bill and Kyoko would like to come forward to the podium, they may, and then after they can say a couple of words, and then we'll take a photo with the entire council down by the flags. Thank you so much for coming. Whereas the vision for a library lecture hall in Newport Beach that will transform the quality and character of progress and events of Newport Beach Public Library and the Library Foundation, as well as extended Newport Beach community, is coming to fruition. Whereas a library lecture hall will enrich people's lives and be a source of pride for our community for providing informative and entertaining programming of literary, cultural, artistic, and educational value. Whereas it is only through the support of the community that the vision for the state of the art library lecture hall will be realized. And whereas Bill Whitty and Kyoko Sakamoto, in honor of Martin Whitty and the decades-long support of the Whitty family for the Newport Beach Library, the Newport Beach Library Foundation, Whitty Distinguished Author Series, have made a generous contribution to the foundation for the library lecture hall. Whereas Newport Beach City Council has determined that the library lecture hall will now be known as the Whitty Hall for perpetuity. Now, therefore, I, Kevin Muldoon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, hereby proclaim August 23rd, 2022, as Bill Whitty and Kyoko Sakamoto Day in the City of Newport Beach.
Well, Mayor, thank you. You certainly didn't have to do that. I think, as you alluded to, you know, my parents moved here from the East Coast in 1977. My father passed away in 97. But he was really interested in the library, and so our extended family began the lecture series now 25 years ago. And the opportunity to carry on that legacy, when we heard about this through the foundation, through our good friends Larry and Jill Johnson Tucker, seemed like a great opportunity to help something that would expand the usability of the facility to serve the community in a multitude of ways, a whole beyond just the library itself. So Keiko and I were happy to participate, and I want to thank the city for partnering with the foundation on this. You have a world-class library, and hopefully this will be a very valuable addition to that, again, for the whole community. And I want to thank Larry and Jill again, because they did all the background work on this, and without them, we probably wouldn't be here either, so.
Well, thank you very much, the Tuckers, for twisting their arm, and thank you for your generosity. It's really a, this library lecture hall would not exist without your contribution, in my opinion. And I think we'd all like to take a picture, and we expect rolling celebrations on, is it August 23rd? August 23rd, going forward to honor you for all your contributions. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we have recusal on the next item by Mayor Pro Temblom.
And that's based on real property interests.
Thank you, Ron. Next item for discussion is potential traffic calming options for Tuscan Avenue. Staff?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor. Council Dave Webb, your Director of Public Works, and tonight I have Brad Summers with us. He's the Principal Traffic Engineer. He's filling in for Tony Bryan, who last talked about this subject with you in June. And Brad's, now that Tony's retiring, he's graciously stepped up or volunteered or been asked to address this item. So he's going to go through, as you recall, when we met last in June, the discussion ended with, we wanted a little more graphical information on what some of the options would like, so staff's looked at that. We have that to present to you tonight, and then we can go further in your direction. Red?
Yeah, thanks for the introduction, Dave. As Dave mentioned, I'm Brad Summers, the Principal Civil Engineer within your Public Works Department. And this evening, we'll go ahead and follow up, or I guess jump right in with the project background, and it's just several dates. I know there's been quite a bit of discussion, as I've been catching up on this item and looking through the prior council meetings, as well as the staff reports, and even being or getting a chance to go out into the community and observe the roadway myself. Draw attention to the June 28th City Council meeting. There was quite a bit of discussion, some great input from the community as well, and there were quite a few ideas and thoughts that went around there. And that's, as David said, this is, gives us a chance to kind of put a picture to that and better understand what these ideas and concepts were. Another item within there was the direction by council to remove the trial closure. That was the closure of Tuscan Avenue just south of Cliff Drive, and that was done on June 30th, 2022, and since then, the roadway has been open and back at its natural state. So to jump right in, one of the items we talked about was a sidewalk. I know the sidewalk conversation for Newport Heights is not a new conversation, and we understand that the basic concept is there. It's the reality, it's to give the pedestrians a pathway outside of the roadway, you know, and a continuous pathway, hopefully, away from the moving motor vehicles. When looking at it again at a conceptual level, we chose the east side. We felt that this was better suited. There was less crossings. When you look at Avon down below, it's really kind of a five-point intersection, so this keeps you away from having to cross a few legs there. And then as you continue up towards Cliff Drive, you kind of can continue your path up without, again, crossing Tuscan Avenue. It also has a few sections that have already been constructed, excuse me. That's those gray sections there. The green represents what would be needed to complete the sidewalk. And then we have talked over the years, too, about a significant link. This is not considered one. If you may recall, a significant length street is defined in our municipal code, and that's a street to where the city desires, at some point in the future, to have sidewalks, and it actually requires the homeowners, through major remodels, to build that section in front of their property. So it's a way of getting the sidewalk, but to do it over time. And again, this is not part of that, but of course, it could be considered at a different As with any project like this, there are some challenges. The steep grade, I believe it's about 12% for the street, poses some constructability items, as well as the private improvements, but we can deal with these through construction. We have in the past. But I think the bigger item here is what was noted in Tony Bryan's staff report from June, and derived from their meeting in June of last year with the community, in which Jim Houlihan, our Deputy Public Works Director, was at as well. And it appeared at that time that there was not quite the support from the community to put sidewalks in. And I know also, and it's not listed here, streetlights were also part of that conversation, and at the same time, they felt that the support from the community wasn't there to move forward with that. So if this was an idea we wish to pursue, that would be one of the items we'd work Another item that came up was turning movements at Cliff and Tuscan. Some members of the community during the last council meeting had talked about concerns from a limited sight distance. So when you pull off of Tuscan, you would look left and kind of get that picture in the bottom right. And as you can see there, the natural curvature of the roadway does give a little bit of less sight distance there. The idea here, from a high level, again, would be to do something such as put in that green area, that would be kind of a raised pork chop meeting, we'd call it, somewhat of a barrier that would help to encourage motorists to make a right turn and not a left turn. We'd have to do some other improvements, maybe some red curb to restrict some parking in there, as well as maybe rework the radiuses around the curves to create just a little more room, since we're putting that item in the middle. Now, it should be noted, this item is something because it's a concern that was brought to the city. Staff will look at this on the side or away from even the Tuscan and Ocean discussion, because it is something that we do on a daily basis. And then something we'll talk about a little bit deeper into the presentation, restricting movements here may cause challenges if other traffic calming items were put down along Tuscan or Ocean View. So we'll hit that a bit later. One-way streets, I know this has been an item that was discussed. I know there was an item for Cronin Omar last meeting, so we're pretty familiar with the benefits and the impacts of one-way streets. Essentially, we know in these narrow streets, it could help smooth out traffic, maybe help out those awkward passing situations where you move over for that car coming the other way. We also know there may be an increase with speed. Usually when traffic smooths out, cars do go a little bit faster. I wouldn't expect a large increase here, maybe a few miles per hour. Would create a reduction of access to some of the businesses that are down there, which I'll highlight in a bit. And of course, there's always a compliance concern. We've noted over the years with our one-way streets that sometimes there's some confusion, and sometimes there's some people that maybe try and sneak a few houses in. We looked at it. We feel it best suited as a counterclockwise one-way couplet, and in talking about that, what these blue arrows represent, it would be up Tuscan Avenue and then back down Ocean. So we'd make them both one-way if this were the direction to go. Probably the biggest con here, of course, is the nexus for this discussion was to limit pass-through traffic along Tuscan, that traffic that may be moving, excuse me, further up into the neighborhood from the Mariners Mile business area, and this just would not restrict Other conversations, there were a few different ideas of, could the closure be moved down to the south end at Avon Street? And this is just a picture I took. I did go out several times trying to get a picture with more cars on the street. I have seen it more parked up than this, but this shows Tuscan straight ahead. You have the Avon parking lot on the right or the extension. Ocean View is kind of that diagonal up and left. Avon would be left, and behind me would be the other leg of Tuscan towards Coast Highway, just to give you a frame of reference. So the first thing to look at would be, what if there was a full closure down there? And again, this is a real high-level concept. So that green area, again, would be some sort of raised median area, probably landscaped, basically a barrier to keep moving motor vehicles from going up that way. We would probably design in some bicycle pass-throughs and pedestrian pass-throughs. A couple of things to look at here, before we detail some other items, is we feel to create that area, we would probably consider relocating the parking on Avon on that east leg. You can see kind of the shadowed-in area there from the aerial where they're currently parked up against the businesses towards Coast Highway. It would better function if those moved up against the home on the north side, because then that better aligns Avon across the intersection, creates the room for that barrier area. We also have the highlighted blue businesses on the left, and there's actually a business access issue when we start talking about limiting access on the south end that we wanted to highlight as well. So as you can see, the businesses here, so 2600 and 2606 take all their access for the parking lot off of Ocean View. 2610 and 2630 are, they enter in off of Avon, and they're narrow drive aisles with angled parking, which have them exit out onto Ocean View. So any change, again, down at the south end, we'll have to put consideration and work with the businesses as well to let them know, because their access will be changing. Now, 2620 is actually its own parking lot. It's not directly tied to a business, and they can, they have ingress and egress along Avon. Another item that we wanted to bring up, which kind of leads to the design of what could be considered a cul-de-sac or to that end, although we don't encourage trucks to come into this area, and we would definitely sign it to try and discourage them from making that trip down to Ocean or Tuscan, the idea here is we have to design for it simply because if a truck does find their way in there, we have to make sure they can get out. So we use what are called turning templates. That's what the black lines with the image of the truck represent. We use it quite often as an engineering tool when we're designing, like onsite circulation for parking lots in other neighborhoods. So what this shows us is kind of how we would have to design that bulb out, again, more like a cul-de-sac, but it also indicates that we probably have to prohibit more parking in that south end, which may create more of an impact for those southerly homes on Tuscan Avenue. Yeah, so that would be like a red curb or a parking restriction. So the pros for this, I think it does eliminate the pass-through traffic along Tuscan and Ocean View by simply prohibiting cars from going that way. We know that the major con, and what we've heard through the study, which became evident, as well as heard from the other neighborhoods, is that the traffic won't go away. It's going to be redistributed, and I think it would be similar to what we saw in the Cliff closures. So I think we'd see a similar redistribution of that traffic, even if we closed it completely along Avon. We also noted that the all-access for the residents and businesses would now have to take place up off of Cliff. And this is where we come back to that idea, if we restrict turning movements along Cliff, say you lived on Tuscan, you wanted to go down to the peninsula, and you could only turn right on Cliff, now you'd have to go down Cliff, and either you turn back and head towards Riverside, or head out towards Dover and back down Coast Highway. So again, it's a redistribution of that traffic. And then we talked about the truck challenges and the need for parking and how we would design it that way. Another concept we talked about was, what if we just made it inbound-only? Similar layout here, again, the green would be a raised median or barrier landscaped area. We would probably consider relocating that parking lot on Avon again. There would be similar issues for the businesses. They could come in this way, but then again, everybody would exit along Cliff. So the pros for that is, of course, we maintain access at Avon for the neighborhood. There is a benefit to that. We could take that meaning, we could narrow it, we could create a real neighborhood entry sort of feeling, which may discourage some people, but in reality, we know those that use it now, it won't be a barrier to them passing through the neighborhood. So that's still a possibility, and again, we talked about the limited access for the residents. A third item would be, what if Tuscan was just outbound? We looked at several different ways of putting some sort of raised median barrier in this area, and this was one of the concepts. So with this, you know, Tuscan would be restricted to southbound only, which of course is what, again, what the nexus of the conversation was, was how to reduce the pass-through traffic along Tuscan, and Ocean remain open. In this situation, we wouldn't have to swap the parking on Avon, so it could still stay on the business side. And then the other benefit is that the businesses would still have full access to their properties. Of course, this would eliminate the pass-through traffic on Tuscan, but again, the traffic's gonna, it's gonna go elsewhere, so we would expect to see an increase along Ocean, and then again, in those other neighborhoods up in Newport Heights. So that's pretty much, we talked about, that's a conceptual level view. You know, I had some thoughts as I was going through this, and just to close out the conversation, you know, I've had the opportunity to not be the one who's worked through all this, that was Tony, but then to take a fresh look at the study work that had been done, as well as, as well as listening on the presentations and hear what the community was saying. And I think ultimately, we understand that the pass-through traffic is something that exists on Tuscan Avenue. It is a reality on that. When we did the trial at Tuscan, it was successful in eliminating that. I think we saw about 500 cars dropped off of Tuscan, but we also understand that traffic went elsewhere. So we saw increases on Riverside, Avon, and Cliff primarily. We know that, and again, looking at it with fresh eyes, Tuscan in its natural state is actually, from the numbers, is a fairly low-speed street, as well as a fairly low-volume street. And again, that's in its natural state. And then fortunately, since it's been reopened in June, and checking with the PD and Public Works, we fortunately haven't had any incidents or any calls. And so again, that from my observations and from looking at the numbers, Tuscan, again, in its natural state, is a nice street. It is fairly calm. But that being said, we do understand, I think especially on Mariners Mile, there will be development down there, and we, again, we do know there's pass-through traffic along there. So looking at the studies and understanding the recommendation to reopen it, I think is valid, but this endeavor has really been a good exercise for us in the fact that, looking at that future development, which we don't quite know what that will be or how it'll affect the streets yet, but there may be more traffic. I think this has given us the opportunity to really understand the pass-through nature within Ocean View and Tuscan, but also see the impacts of when we change things here, what happens up in the heights. So as we look at those projects in the future, we're definitely going to be able to have a good focus and a clear focus on the impacts those projects will have on the heights, not just Tuscan and Ocean View, but looking at the entire neighborhood. So I just wanted to add that little note. Again, I've had that unique opportunity to look at this with fresh eyes.
And I believe that concludes our presentation, and back to council.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from the dice before we go to the podium? Okay, public comments on this item, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Stephanie King. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I'm a resident of Tuscan Ave, and I appreciate the review. There seem to be a couple of simpler ideas, though, that weren't part of the program. One is, as I walk around the neighborhood, I notice that both Irvine Ave and Tuscan Ave, as you come off Cliff, as well as 17th Street, have really large yellow signs that say, "Slow down, you're entering a residential neighborhood." I think adding that at Tuscan and Avon, and also at Tuscan and Cliff, would be a really simple, helpful thing to just give people that reminder, as we do driving onto Irvine Ave, off of Cliff, as well as driving onto the other part of Tuscan, off of Cliff or off of 17th Street. The other thing, in terms of the left turn off of Tuscan and Cliff, again, to me, it seems like an opportunity to put a stop sign there, as opposed to restricting left turns. I think a stop sign in a crosswalk could slow that traffic. Right now, it's a blind curve. There are lots of walkers, lots of bikers, lots of dog walkers, as everybody knows, and that is a bit of a Frogger situation, as it is now. And again, a stop sign there, just to calm the speed demons on Cliff Drive, as well as offer an opportunity to connect more pedestrian traffic with a crosswalk, seems like an option for calming the traffic around there. And then lastly, there are stop signs, of course, at the top of Ocean View and Tuscan that are very rarely stopped at. I was on the street today, walking my dog a couple of times, and both times, people just drive straight through. It's a very narrow passageway. There are a lot of pedestrians in that area, and it, again, and kind of blind curves, given the parking, and so some enforcement on the stop signs that already exist would be helpful as well. So those are my three ideas, I think, are simpler than some of the ones that were presented, although I appreciate all the ideas presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Carrie Slayback. I live at 426 Riverside Avenue, Honorable Mayor Muldoon, and members of the City Council. You can do something nobody else can do. I hope with this meeting, you help us reunify our neighborhood. This has been a contentious issue for months. We have to look forward to development on Mariners Mile, which will definitely cause, well, potentially, cause a lot more vehicle trips, and I would like to use the energy, intelligence, influence, and resources of the Tuscan people to join with all of us in the future amelioration of that traffic, and meet with you, city staff, and take part in the long-term plan, all of us together, for the traffic we know is going to come in the future. Your staff report was definitive. Tuscan does not qualify for closure at 3,000 to 4,000 vehicle trips, as your policy requires. It didn't have many incidents of accidents reported. It's not a dangerous street. The speeds are 23 miles an hour on Tuscan. Vehicle trips are only 834. Remember, you require between 3,000 and 4,000 to close off that street. So this street has received an inordinate amount of attention for being a slow, quiet, calm street. So I'm going to end my presentation the same way I started it. Will you please help us reunify our neighborhood by making this the very last time we discuss Tuscan closure? I know you have alternatives. Please don't consider any alternatives that shift traffic. Fairness is fairness. We don't need extra traffic from another street, but we all need amelioration of traffic in the future. So please help us unify around that and lay this to rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward. And if you plan to speak on this item, please come forward now, and you can stand at the opposing podium. Yes?
I'm Robert Clark. Pardon me. Wow. I live at 215 Tuscan Avenue and have for a long period of time. I would support Carrie Slayback's comments. I don't think that we're looking for any special treatment. I know that there have been reports about a slow traffic, minimal number of automobiles. However, when you live on this street, and minimal accidents, but we've had some very serious accidents, okay? And one right in front of our house. And I think I presented a presentation to the council members showing that specific thing. At the top of Cliff, at the top of Tuscan, at Cliff, it's considered, I no longer take that, because I hate that turn, because as you, as you, cars coming up Riverside at the stop, and then they seem to gun it coming up, and they come past Tuscan. So you can get caught by surprise if you're coming up Tuscan, and you want to make a left turn and jog and continue up. So, and there have been some accidents there. And so, we appreciate the city's response to this, and their attempt to arrive at some kind of a solution. Councilperson Brennan, in one of our, I'm sorry, Brennan, I'm sorry, Joy, in a prior meeting, had what I thought was a really important comment, and that was, we need to somehow divert traffic from going through those neighborhoods, through our neighborhood and through the upper sections. And I think that's a great idea. And so, our, we support, we're looking for something that is positive for the entire community. We're not looking for any special treatment. We've had, the reason we came is because we had some serious incidents. So I don't know what the solution is. I think that the one-way solution has been, has a lot of merit, because what we're considering is not just the impact today, but the impact that Carrie Slayback, pardon me, Carrie Slayback brought up with the new, and the council, but the new development is going to have serious impacts on those neighborhoods, in our neighborhood. So with that, we thank you again. I'm not so sure that I'd like to see this issue closed and go away, because I don't think that's, I don't think that's a solution. I think that it's a combination of things, and it's an attempt to move traffic out and away from that neighborhood as a thoroughfare. So we appreciate. Thank you for your attempt, and I would hope that we can continue to pursue this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I was going to say good evening, but it's not 5 o'clock yet, so you guys are working early today. I want to thank the council for considering this issue. I was here last time, so I don't want to take a lot of your time up again and repeat what I said last time, but my name's Jane Curl. You might have seen the email I sent around today as well, and I know everybody's worked hard on this issue and the studies on this issue, but I did just want to say that we are so concerned about the traffic being redistributed in our neighborhood. I walk it all the time. I see the traffic firsthand. I live at firsthand. I live at 510 Riverside, and I love the Fourth of July. You see all the bike riders going down. It's like my own personal parade, right? But we have an obligation to everybody using those streets to make sure the traffic is distributed fairly. And I like the sidewalk idea on Tustin. I walk Tustin a lot. If there are sidewalks there, that would be great. But I've never had any more problem walking on Tustin than I've had on any other streets in the neighborhood. But I do want to just raise my hand and volunteer. If there's going to be a further committee on this or further brainstorming on it, I'd love to be a part of it so we can all work together. It's the holidays. It's a crazy time in the world. I hate to see this tearing our neighborhood apart. It was so contentious the last meeting. So let's all come together and protect all the streets in the Heights. Maybe we need sidewalks on more than just Tustin. Maybe we need sidewalks on other streets. I love the sign idea. I was just noticing we have those on 15th Street, and I was thinking, why don't we put those on Tustin and on Lower Riverside? I mean, Riverside and Tustin both have those big hills, right? So you have issues with that. Maybe more signs, maybe more sidewalks, something. But I think we need to think of this as a Heights calming study and not just a Tustin calming study, because Tustin's pretty calm already. They have lower, lower number of cars, lower speed of cars. Our hills are the same side. So it can't just be we want to calm Tustin. It has to be calming the Heights altogether. And I do thank you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward.
Good evening, council. My name is Lynn Lorenz, and I was here and I spoke last time. And I didn't get the opportunity to share something that was given to me by one of my friends and a person that lives in this neighborhood, not on Riverside, but one on, one of the parallel streets. And these are some issues that were, are new issues and precede, of course, the discussion tonight. It's perhaps information that would be useful as we look at this situation further. She has to say, I attended the recent staff-led Tustin Avenue traffic meeting. She was there when all the neighborhood was out on the street. And she said, I recall that staff in attendance repeated at least twice that Newport Heights has had the most traffic studies of any other Newport Beach community, and that these past studies should be adequate to make current Tustin Avenue circulation decisions. It was also intimated that the number of prior studies would probably preclude the Heights from having any further traffic studies. If this reasoning was indeed communicated, it is flawed and misleading. This is a person that really keeps track of everything that's going on in the Heights community. She says, if I recall correctly, there was a 2017 study and a 2004 study. The most recent and possibly relevant study was conducted during the beginning of COVID. That was when the block, the blocking went up. And all traffic was considered considerably reduced during that period. The importance of conducting another traffic study before making a final decision about Tustin Avenue should follow. Here's something that I don't recall hearing about last time that is extremely important to take into consideration when dealing with the Heights area, and that is the fact that there are three public schools in a small area of Newport Heights. They're literally surrounded by four major traffic arteries, Seventeenth Street, Dover, PCH, and Newport and the 55 freeway. No other community in Newport Beach has such a high density of schools in the middle of such busy traffic thoroughfares, also without sidewalks, she notes. I cycle through this area daily. I walk through the area daily, as do many of our community's children. Sharos, that's how you pronounce that, have already been placed on clay but are completely inadequate at improving riding safety, especially with the recent increased prevalence of students on electric bikes, which is a nightmare, who, as we all know, commonly and obliviously cruise through intersections. Blocking of Tustin Avenue, especially combined with the thousands of additional car trips into our community expected from the upcoming Mariners Mile development, poses immediate and various and serious safety concerns for our children, pedestrians, and cyclists. It bears repeating that a new and comprehensive traffic study of the entire Heights is needed before an informed final decision can be made before blocking off Tustin Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Honorable Mayor Muldoon, members of the City Council. This is open comment, right? Not just on Tustin?
This currently is on the study session of Tustin Avenue. There'll be public comments a little bit.
Okay. I'll come back for that.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Any other public comments on Tustin Avenue? Okay, thank you. See, now we'll bring it back. I imagine I have a couple of ideas and, or suggestions. Someone was taking notes. Councilman Duffield?
You're making me talk. Well, this was originally brought to me, and so I guess I should have to make some comments. I was saddened that what we tried didn't work. And so we go to the next phase. But at this point, what I've heard tonight, what I'm listening to, seems as though we are in need of stepping back and taking a deeper look at it. I do agree that the calming of the entire neighborhood is, is important. And that one road does, does cause extra problems, but it's there. It's not going away. So we've got to deal with it. And since I'm not going to be on the council anymore, there'll be people much wiser than I coming behind me, and they'll have the solution, I'm sure. But instead, I feel like we just got to keep the communications open. And I do believe that this new development on the Coast Highway will have a serious impact. And it's many years off, but it would be good to keep, keep an eye on it and keep working with ideas to, as Councilman Brenner said, diverting people from using that shortcut. Now, I don't know how you do that. Good idea, but anyway, as I said, others coming behind me might be able to figure it out, as well as our staff is very intelligent. So that's a few of my comments. I wrote, I looked at everything we, you guys wrote down. It doesn't seem like you want any of it. So I can't suggest sidewalks or much of anything. And so I just feel, as long as the accidents are down and the speeds are down, I don't know how to fight for anything different. I tried, but apparently the street is okay the way it is.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Well, of course, I live in the Heights, and it's in my district, but I just look at it like another resident. And my experience is, as a resident, this is all about people just driving like idiots, you know, basically. And I include electric bikes in that. So a lot of that's on us, on, on, you know, parents with their kids who've all of a sudden get a very fast bike for Christmas and what sort of education they get to be safe with that bike. I, on my street, just the other day, some guy came down in a Ford F-350, all hopped up, doing about 45 miles an hour, and he just blew, I, you know, I don't yell. I just kind of put my hands in a, in a motion like that. No interest, you know, just blowing by me. And that's what scares the heck out of all of us in our residents in our neighborhoods when this occurs. And that makes all of us, I know on Holly Lane, we've had discussions and how all the residents would love to dead-end Holly Lane at one end because of this. We have a whole new, since I moved there 36 years ago, it's a whole new deal with kids on the street. And parents are out there, and, you know, the signs go out on the streets that we are all familiar with, the Little Green Men. And people are doing what they can, but we can't seem to stop the random scary driver that's just speeding through our neighborhoods. And that's a really hard thing to legislate and get done. And part of the history of the Heights, when I first got on council, we had a couple of community meetings, and residents were split almost 50/50 on the items like bike lanes, safe bike lanes, safe pathways to school, and dedicated bike lanes. And of course, that would be for times coming and going from school. But what that meant for residents is losing parking on one side of the streets. And so that, there was no consensus to put in bike lanes, just as there's been no consensus in the Heights to put in sidewalks. And as many people know, that it's not uncommon on Tustin Avenue even, which is a pretty, and I'm talking about Upper Tustin, is a pretty busy street. And you see families in the street with, you know, strollers and dogs, and they're outside the parked, parallel parked cars. And it just shouldn't be that way. And my, you know, I'm a total pro sidewalk guy, and for that reason. But, you know, in my view, when you have sort of a 50/50 on that, you really need to think about the decision which way you're going to go. So I, I would like to maybe revisit that and take the temperature of the residents again for these sort of measures that would definitely be, make for safer, safer streets. Signage, absolutely. I am for all signage that will help mitigate traffic, speeding drivers, and certainly stop signs in the appropriate places. We need to just do what we can to slow it down. I know on Holly Lane, one of the residents advocated and got a double stripe line, and there's a slight curve in the street, and that seems to help. You know, it just narrows the perceived roadway to drivers. So that's, you know, another item that can go in and, and I think help to some degree. But what's important here is to follow data. And no doubt, you know, Mariners Mile will impact, the development on Mariners Mile, the future development will impact all of the Heights. And we need to just understand the data as it is now, and look at it and measure it when we start to see, you know, before it gets to be bad. And so we can take more measures, and if that means some street closures, whatever it takes to defend the Heights to the degree that we can, that will still allow us to get emergency vehicles in, still allow for the traffic that we all want, which is we all want it to flow. It's very frustrating when it's all backed up. And certainly when Harbor High lets out and on my street, when I come to a council meeting and I go to turn left, I'm, I'm afraid I'm going to miss the meeting. I'm going to be like 15 minutes late, because I can't make a left turn because it's all happening at once. And that's just the nature of it with the schools. So this is a long way of saying that there isn't, in my view, a solution. The only thing we can do is take suggestions, and the best suggestions come from residents and the public, and try to implement them to some degree in, in all of this. And discussion is important to continue. I think all options should be open, and we just keep working as a community to, to do this. But traffic, Mr. Summers can only do so much. What we need is input from residents and ideas. But also, with the understanding is that we're limited. And so part of that is upon all of us, as our kids get older and we give them cars. And there's a few kids on my street that have cars, and every now and then, they're cruising through pretty fast. So that's an education side of it. So it's, I think, many small things that can make the difference. And I think sidewalks would be a real benefit to the community. And of course, it would take years to get sidewalks in. And for all the reasons we know, people who have yards that have encroached into, into the public space, they don't want to give up those, those encroachments slash improvements, walls and mailboxes and all the rest of it. But to me, those are worth sacrificing to provide people sidewalks. But as a council member, I'm reluctant to force that on people when we don't have a clear consensus, because really, that's what this is about, is the community coming together and, and the, the super majority at least saying, this is what we need. This is what we, we want. And then look at the, at the data and move forward from there. So it's, we all know traffic's been moving faster, and people have been a little more, a little over the top since the pandemic and the way they drive. And it's not just on the freeways. It's not just on Coast Highway. It's also in our neighborhoods. And to the degree we get help from the police department, I know the police department did a couple of stings recently up at the high school. So that was very helpful. And we just need to keep working at all levels to reduce traffic, to reduce the speed of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brenner?
I also am not going to be here to further this conversation, but it's something that has been very near and dear to my heart since being on council, because I feel like Corona Del Mar and Newport Heights have such similarities here. And so I have been one to say, we need to do some revolutionary things there, because I know how impacted we are in Corona Del Mar with the through traffic that is cutting off PCH because it's backed up and going right up and down our residential streets. And right now, I think everybody has grown, it's like the frog in the hot water. We've all kind of grown to accept how it is right now, because we've been there and we've watched it just gradually increase. But my big concern has always been the new development. And I don't think we can be, I don't think you guys can be proactive enough on this. And it, to me, it seems like it's going to have to come down to making it inconvenient to go through those neighborhoods. It needs to be, there need to be speed bumps, there need to be road closures, there need to be one-way streets, and it's going to make it less convenient for you, too. But you can figure out how to take a circuitous route to get around. Whereas other people that are just trying to get through as quickly as possible are not going to spend the time going over a street and up a street and down, you know, in order to get to Seventeenth Street. They're just going to go over to Newport Boulevard and whip up to Seventeenth Street or Dover. So you've got to make it as inconvenient as possible in your neighborhood. And I'm sure there are going to be people that won't like it to start with, you know, but I think you will get used to that easier than you will get used to the increased number of cars that are going to come from all this development. I just, those schools and your homes with your families and everything have just always terrified me when we start talking about 300 condos on the highway. So I would like to see you guys continue to work with the community. And the other thing I was thinking, Brad, if you look at what the Irvine Company did with their developments in Corona Del Mar, the ones that are different, Old Corona Del Mar was before the Irvine Company, and it's not planned well to keep through traffic from going by. But all the Irvine Company properties, the developments, they knew how to have only one or two entrances into a neighborhood, and that that way, only the neighbors went in there. Other people didn't go in there in order to cut through to somewhere else. And I think we need to really look at how we could try to create that sort of a model in our older neighborhoods that, you know, so that people don't use it as a cut through, and it will be a little less convenient for neighbors. But in the long run, I just think that if we don't do something kind of revolutionary there, it's going to be a nightmare, and, and there's going to be accidents that we don't want to even look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions, and I want to make a statement. I came in a little bit late. Just to remind me, are there sidewalks? There are no sidewalks. That's correct. As one of the speakers said, that the community or the neighborhood is very divided on this issue. And it's like we have this Solomon's decision here, is that we're going to either favor one group or the other, when there's compelling reasons on both sides not to disrupt the traffic flow and to disadvantage other streets, Riverside, Cliff Drive, et cetera. It seems to me that the solution is there somewhere within the residents. It seems to me, just as Mr. Avery just said, it's sidewalks. I mean, if, if the problem is you can't walk your, your bikes or the baby carriage, you don't want to do it in the street, obviously, the solution is sidewalks. I think the challenge should be back to the neighbors. We cannot make this decision when this neighborhood is split. And this evening- And this evening on the consent calendar, don't we have a proposal for the EIR for the Newport Village, which is the development of Mariners Mile? Isn't that what this is about, the EIR for that item?
I'm not aware, but I believe it's so.
Well, I may be, Simone is.
Yes.
Yes. It seems to me how we, I don't know, how we define that geographic area that's going to be defined in that EIR for that development, right on the other side of Tustin and, I guess it's Tustin, right there at the end of Tustin. This neighborhood and the impact of that development, what is it, 283 units, something like that, are going to be built if that all goes through the process and the next council, and that's going to feed right into Tustin. To Joy's point, the time is now with these conceptual studies being done on this Newport Village development, the EIR, is how do we manage, how does the city manage this traffic? We can't just have blind folders on and think, well, there's going to be no impact and everybody just has to buck it up. We have to do some serious traffic management planning, and they're not going to be any winners, except people whose lives are saved. And I think it's, we've heard both sides, it's become very divisive, as we know. I think signage is a good way to ameliorate some of the problem. I don't know, I think at some point people disregard signage, and we don't want to make them ugly, but to emphasize that, I think sidewalks would be my preferred solution. I think more enforcement. I, you've all heard me talk about the lack of, not the lack of enforcement, I'm pleased with our enforcement because it doesn't have to be every day, it should be a deterrent factor. I see it, I live on Lido, and I run every morning at 5:00 in the morning or 5:30, and the construction trucks whipping through stop signs, whipping through stop signs. And I stand there, daring them to run me over, and they just go around me at 5:30 in the morning. It's dark, I have my reflective jacket on. We have, we have a traffic management problem in the entire city. It's not just Newport Heights, it's all over the city where people are looking to avoid ways of passing through on Coast Highway. So I think with all this development, we cannot have blinders on. There's going to be tremendous impact on our neighborhoods with this development, and it should be reflected in the EIR that is going to be commissioned, or at least the firm that's going to be decided. I think that's really our responsibility, is to assess the entire neighborhood and that impact. So this is a study session, I just recommend we continue to find better ways to do what's obvious, and I think our sidewalks would be my number one choice. So I don't, I know that probably pleases only half the people, but it has the least impact to the neighboring streets, our sidewalks. Incidentally, speaking of traffic, I had my car side swiped last week ago Saturday in my own home, parked right in front of my front door in the middle of the day, and I come out to go to the Elton John concert in Pasadena. And my husband and I walk out the front door, which is six feet away from the car, and there's a big side swipe on the driver's side on the left bumper. And so somebody just, you know, racing through the streets, didn't even leave a note. So this is what we're dealing with in our nice community. So I think we need more holistic macro study of the overall traffic patterns in our city. So thank you for your time.
It was probably that guy that wanted to run you over while he was worried you'd do jail time.
He's coming back for me.
Yeah, your car instead.
So I agree with Councilman Brenner, I think, call it the IKEA model, where you can't really find your way through easily. If I were the residents of this entire neighborhood, I would try to come up with a consensus on what that would look like. If you're not interested in having a sequence of one-way streets and really making some severe changes, I would start looking to at least go circulate a petition around some ideas that everyone could agree on. And it might be planters, sidewalks, physical structures that make the street look quaint, probably increase property value and have a traffic calming effect, but would be a little different from, hey, put up some signs or keep everything the same, because it's just going to get worse, is my prediction, based on the development that's coming. And there are some communities that have done a really good job, I think, like Manhattan Beach or other beach communities, really good job figuring out how to make it pretty picturesque and more quaint despite the fact it's built on a traditional beachside grid, which, as Councilman Brenner said, is just not really built for, it's not designed, I should say, for the modern day commuter. So, I mean, if a bunch of people came forward and said that they want one way on Ocean Boulevard and they want narrow Tustin, I would say, let's, you know, I would put all my weight behind you, but it seems like there's no resident consensus. So I, at the same time, hope that we don't give up because I don't think it's going to go away. So maybe someone can find something that people can agree upon if you don't like the IKEA model of making it difficult for people to cut through. So I know staff, it's pretty mixed up here. Apologies for that. Do you have any specific questions or guidance requests from us or?
Well, I think we can do some takeaways. I like the signs for neighborhoods, and we had this problem over on Bay Avenue on the Peninsula. If you go right by the Legion there, you'll notice we made a little monument, put some fake signs up, and it feels a little neighbor-y. So something like that, maybe down the road. I'll talk to Brad about that. I know this conversation is going to continue, and I understand the council's complexity on this because of the development that will come in Mariners Mile. There will be impacts, but trying to find consensus is the hard thing. And what I'll keep bringing forward is what you've all kind of told the residents, somewhere you have to have a give, some people are going to probably have to give a little, or have to give into sidewalks, or we're going to have to give into some planters or some chokers that, yeah, it slows you down getting home, but the big picture's there. So I think we hear that, Mayor. I like the IKEA model, if we can incorporate it, we're going to have to do something. But I bring the community back to the Shretts. If you remember, Kim Brant was here at the time we did the Shretts about how do we make a village, how do we change the area? And we just got gridlocked and everybody pointing fingers and no, no, no. And we're going to have to get to some yes, and that'll be the big consensus building. Remember, we have the circulation element, which will deal with the detail of the circulation element coming down the road. That'll be important. We have other improvements maybe we can do that will alleviate a little bit, and it has to do with the highway and things like that. But we'll have to think a little bigger than that. And there are things that you might do, and Brad mentioned one, like the sidewalks. Maybe we have significant links, and maybe we make a couple of these, we've talked in the past, like Cliff, Tustin, significant links, which mean we're not going to put in sidewalks now, but anytime they develop, they put the link in. And we've done that before, and we've slowly increased to the point where we had it on Irvine Avenue, there's a significant link by the high school. If you remember years ago, we had most of the sidewalk there, and eventually the city just came in and said, fill in the gaps. And we did that. And now we have sidewalk on Irvine Avenue. That might be a process that goes in slowly if the future council wants to consider something like that, so. But we're in agreement, we have to start doing something, we do have to plan ahead. We worry about the development coming in Mariners Mile too and the impacts it'll have and dealing with the existing gridlock and what we're going to deal with, so. But we'll work on the signage and some other things.
Thank you. And one more comment from Councilwoman Dixon.
I just want to ask staff, thank you, Mayor, have we made an emphatic, aggressive, maybe we need to send an emphatic, aggressive letter to Google and Wave and Apple and to look at their maps and ask them not to use those access to get up to Newport Boulevard? I mean, I honestly can't say that I've seen how they direct traffic up, but have we ever, if that is indeed the case, we should encourage them strongly not to encourage traffic off PCH up to Newport Boulevard by going through the neighborhoods? Have we ever done that?
I think, Brad, you've had some looks at that. I know other cities have done that, like Beverly Hills and stuff, that have real bad cut throughs on certain things. It's called a geofence, where they electronically don't allow the
Right.
algorithm to push you through a certain area the shortest route. You think we could look into something like that?
Why can't we do that?
Well, we can, and over the years, you know, this has been a conversation with not only Newport Beach, but with our neighboring cities as well that we've been following. And generally, those companies are reluctant to change or at the request of the cities, but it's something we'll definitely pursue and look at further. We even recently noticed, I think, just talking about it, Apple Maps was, I think, pushing people down the bayfront if you got onto or off the ferry. So it took quite an effort from staff to get that changed, but they finally changed it. So, and that, of course, was a major safety concern of ours, so that had a little more emphasis on it. But we will look into it, and I'll reach out to our surrounding agencies too, to see if they've had any luck or have a way to do it.
And one other follow-up, we talked about this at the last meeting on this subject, that we all became aware that we really don't have traffic enforcement on the upper Tustin, I guess? Is that, have we, can we have a recommendation of council that we do more active for, you know, heavy trucks or whatever the truck signs say, no trucks? And there are trucks that we are, we need to do better enforcement on trucks on those streets?
Again, the signage is there, I think you talked about, and that, the police chief isn't here tonight, but there is an enforcement. We've talked about structural elements, we've talked about education, but as Ms. Raver said too, there's an enforcement issue that has to eventually be taken. People are running stop signs and just not obeying.
So that would be part of my recommendation for further study, is to step up the enforcement, especially on the trucks. If commercial trucks are driving through those neighborhoods, that's not permitted. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, now it's time for public comments on non-agenda items.
Mayor Maldune, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I believe this is agenda and non-agenda items. When you come back this evening after your closed session, Roman numeral 14, you will be taking a vote on matters to be placed on a future agenda. Tonight's item you will be voting on would be whether at a future meeting you want to empower a private landowner group to develop a plan for development of the airport area. For you, this is a non-discussion item, but the public is allowed to discuss it. I provided some written comments on it, and I noticed in the lobby, there is a letter from the property owners of the property that you are planning to buy a future police headquarters property from in the airport area, who are objecting to this item. Their reason for objecting is the same one that I would, which I think there's a considerable difficulty ethically in allowing some property owners to plan the use for the other property owners. These are objecting to that. The group that you're considering only owns 37% of the airport property, and they want to generate a plan themselves for 100% of the property. I think there's a problem with that. So I would recommend that you vote no on this item. When I saw this letter, which is apparently received too late to be posted online, I thought they were misreading the item because normally this is just where you want to put an item on the agenda. When I read it more carefully, it would actually, even though only three of you have to vote to put it, to direct the staff to do this, it's not just to create a future agenda item, but it says to develop a memorandum of understanding for this group to develop that. So that would be considerable effort on the part of the city staff, and it's for an idea that I think is a bad idea. So I don't think it's good tonight to be directing staff to work on a bad idea. Thank you.
Yes, next speaker, please.
I'll stand at the Bill Whitney podium, just for good luck here. My name is, thank you for taking time, Honorable Mayor Maldune and Council. My name is Park Miller. I'm the managing partner for Lincoln Property Company here in Orange County. We're the, we sent you a letter before this meeting, so I will not take three minutes here. But, you know, Lincoln's a 60-year-old, well-known development company. I manage the operation for Lincoln in Orange County, and, you know, Orange County is our backyard. It's where we, me and my partner Omar live. We live spitting distance from here and wouldn't live anywhere else in the world. You know, in particular, we own several properties in the airport area. We've been big investors in the airport, we've been big investors in Newport, we've been big investors throughout Orange County with seven and a half million feet. And the item in particular that I wanted to address is this item 14, which is the MOU in this community plan, and how this process has been undertaken and this coalition formed around the concern group, who, by the way, we, no disrespect and nothing against them, it's just the principled fact that they formed a coalition and you've got a private developer that's taking control of developing and managing a community plan. And, you know, you've got to think about the conflict of interest and the serious concerns that we have as a big owner with a lot of money invested in the area and the conflict of interest that that contains. You know, with the short notice, this kind of caught us off guard a little bit, so we do have a couple of other owners that we're not able to mobilize quickly enough to get you communications, so I would just ask, please, to listen and read what they have to say. But our request is for you guys to reconsider the approach. I think very clearly, we're totally supportive of doing a community plan for this area. That's how you get great development done in a very cohesive way. And I know that the airport area is sometimes viewed as an afterthought. That is not what we think. Like, this area, just like a lot of Orange County, is kind of Generation Y, you know, it's coming up for redevelopment, and you guys have the potential to do something incredibly special there. We see that vision, we want to support it, and we also want to ensure that at a minimum, we've got a seat at the table to contribute our ideas, because this is what we wake up every day to do in this backyard. And hot damn, you know, we get to do it in Newport Beach, like, that's extremely exciting for us and for our other property owners. So I would ask that you take that into consideration. I think our recommendation and what we've seen is that you have the city manage this process. If it's about funding, we're happy to sponsor it, so are the other property owners that are alongside us. We would love to be engaged, we'd love to have a fully transparent and equitable process involving the community, involving all the different community groups. This is all about transparency and equity, and then hoping to put together a vision that we can participate in to create a one-of-a-kind project. Barely under three minutes, thank you so much for taking time and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other public comments on agenda or non-agenda items? Okay, seeing some, Mr. Harper, do you have a closed session announcement?
Thank you, Mayor Maldune. The city council will adjourn to closed session to meet with legal counsel regarding possible initiation of litigation in regards to one matter, and that does set forth on the agenda under item 4A.
Call them in order for the November 29, 2022, regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you, Mr. Harper, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, there's no closed session report this evening.
Okay, thank you. I believe we have a special guest from St. James and Great Episcopal Church, is Reverend Cindy Evans Voorhees here for the invocation. Please stand.
Creator God, we thank you for all our civil servants and for their hard work. May you continually bless them all and generously give each of them wise and discerning hearts to skillfully govern the people in our beautiful city of Newport Beach. We give special thanks for the dedication and good works of outgoing council persons Diane Dixon, Joy Brenner, Duffy Duffield, and Mayor Kevin Maldune. We ask a special blessing on the continued service of California Assemblywoman-elect Diane Dixon for her wisdom and care for the future of our state. Grant us peace, hope, and joy as we enter this holiday season, and help us to remember those who face hardship, especially the citizens of Iran and the war in Ukraine. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Councilman Brenner, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Please, please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As a segue on the Reverend's comments, we have a presentation to offer to outgoing council member Diane Dixon. Councilwoman Dixon is a two-time mayor of Newport Beach and has served eight years on city council, and we have a gift to present to you from the city. It's a lovely clock, and it's to watch the painful bills being passed in Sacramento. And just on behalf of the entire city, I wanted to present this to you.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the city, my colleagues, although they're all welcome to add comments after Councilwoman's after councilwoman's, as Dixon speaks, is why we wanted to thank you for your service to the city, and please continue to fight for, for the residents of Sacramento. We wish you all the best in safety and protection and wisdom up there, and we thank you. Yes, please do.
Well, thank you, Mayor. The time has come, it's a very bittersweet moment, to look back and forward at the same time. A quick look back on 2014, deciding to run for office after a three-decade career in business, where I solved problems and accepted challenges, and wanting to serve our city, for no other reason than simply to serve this great city. I ran on a platform of transparency and fiscal discipline, and over the last eight years, and last night, in the spirit of transparency, was my 36th town hall, and it was for the people of District One. So our town halls are always filled with lots of conversation, lots of business, and the support of staff, I should say that first and foremost. I couldn't have done all these town halls without staff support, so I'm very grateful. And as a citizen public servant, a citizen mayor, I chaired the water quality, finance, and aviation committees, and enjoyed them immensely, and our citizen-member council, serving with committed and dedicated colleagues. Our city is exceptionally well-run and financially strong, and it's an important message that I'm happy and proud to, to depart with other members, other colleagues, in two weeks, when they will be departing, that we're leaving the city well, in good shape. So very proud of that. And our government works, and we have a citizenry committed to making our community strong, and for our government to work. Very simply, it's been an honor and a privilege of a lifetime to serve these eight years. So let me just talk a few minutes about District One, and what I hope we've all accomplished together, and with support of my colleagues, over the last eight years. The focus has been on, my focus was on economic revitalization through public works investments on the Balboa Peninsula and West Newport, providing the anchor foundation for private enterprise to be successful. So I started to make a list of just a few of the improvements that we've seen accomplished, on the public side, as well as the private side. The repavement, Newport Boulevards and Balboa Boulevards, landscaping down PCH and West Newport, landscaping up and down Balboa and Newport Boulevards, crosswalks restriped for increased safety, Balboa Village signage and wayfinding, landscaping, landscaping on Coast Highway, Newport Island Park and improvements around Newport Island and the bridge area, and increased safety around the bridge areas, enhanced sidewalk maintenance, new Peninsula Fire Station, the soon-to-happen Balboa Fire Station, it's in its early stages of conceptual development, our junior lifeguard headquarters, the beginning of concept work on Newport Pier and McFadden Square, and, and more. I mean, this is just a sample listing, and public works, these are all familiar public works projects, and it couldn't have happened without a dedicated, committed, and world-class public works department. I'm looking for Dave Webb, I don't know where he is, but Dave Webb, you run an excellent operation, and I am grateful. And the people of this, the residents and business owners of District One are grateful, truly. And then, all these public improvements support a vital and revitalized business community, Lido House Hotel, Lido Marina Village, many new restaurants and retail shops have come up just in the last eight years. The Balboa Peninsula is a destination, and people are coming there, and business, until this may be the least of slowdown, but I still think business is strong all over the Peninsula. The Balboa Village is undergoing private ownership revitalization, thanks to the Pyle family, very grateful. Balboa Village Theater, I hope we would be unveiling their conceptual designs, but because of financial, economic issues, they're going through some refinancing, but they are committed to repurposing Balboa Village Theater as a performance venue. I'm grateful mostly of all for the voice of residents, all of our residents who care passionately about our city. We are an amazing city, with hundreds of resident homeowner groups, and the homeowner groups, resident groups on, in my district, the pier-to-pier, the West Newport Beach Association, the Peninsula Point Homeowners, and Lido Isle. They're all active, they care, they write constantly, and express their opinions, and of course, they are always active participants in my town hall, and they're never reluctant to share their opinions. And to, overall, to the city staff for their patience, their expertise, their dedication to our city and the public good, and protection of our taxpayer dollars. One thing I learned as, as an elected official, local official, I come out of the business world where things always operate with a high sense of urgency, you get things done, do it now. Well, I thought that's how it should happen in city government, but you know why? This is really to help people understand, why does it take so long? Because it's your money, and your elected officials, and the staff that, that we all work together want to protect the investment of our, of your taxpayer dollars, and so it goes through rigorous public scrutiny, and public discussion, and debate, to drive a consensus. But just know your money is used well in Newport Beach, and carefully, and that is something that I take away with me, very impressed with how the staff and colleagues on the dais care very much about being careful about your money. We've had, in my eight years, two exceptional police chiefs, Chief Jay Johnson and John Lewis, they've both retired. Now, John, it's, it's announced that he'll be retiring at the end of December, very fine police chiefs, and, and we've been through three fire chiefs, and they've all been outstanding, and our current one, where Jeff is, I don't know if he's here tonight, but they're all outstanding, and very proud to have served with them, and have provided them some two new good, well, three good facilities, including Corona Del Mar, very supportive of that fire station and library. And, you know, contrary to perhaps some misinformation, I'll call it, our council truly is, 2014 to 18, and 18 to now, councils really have been united in many ways. I did not do an official study, but if you consider all the fiscal matters, especially, our council is probably 100% united, give or take one or two votes. We are a united council, we have our differences, which is part of democracy and debate, that's okay, that's healthy, to get to the best decisions, but we truly are a united council on the issues, and they all matter to the people, but on the truly important fiscal-related issues and compensation-related issues, we are united, and I'm very proud of that. So I'm off to Sacramento, to continue to represent Newport Beach and eight other cities in Assembly District 72, in the coastal zone, and inland and South County. I ran expressly, not because I had some burning desire to live in Sacramento, I don't, but many of you have witnessed over the last few years, I caused the power grab from Sacramento against taking power and authority and decision-making away from local governments. I experienced it as a council member. So I ran, and here I'm going to Sacramento to be a voice of the cities, to be a voice for Newport Beach. There's never been an elected council member from Newport Beach serving in Sacramento, and I am honored and grateful for that, and I've told Grace, and I've told Simone, and any other staff member who wants to know, I am there to serve all of you and cities in this district, but especially how we can chip away at some of these major mandates that had no understanding of how the impact is on local cities. I can't promise I'm going to move mountains, but I'm certainly going to do one rock at a time, to try to get back to common sense policymaking. It's going to be a journey, but working across the aisle, and I've already been up to Sacramento four times since Election Day, have met with other newly-elected Assembly people of both sides, both parties, and interestingly enough, there's a newly-elected Assembly person representing the Santa Cruz area, up and down the coast in Northern California, Santa Barbara, and our district, my district, from Seal Beach, Huntington Beach, Newport Beach, and Laguna Beach, and then another representative from the Carlsbad area. We are going to form a coastal caucus, and it's bipartisan, and this is how we can get things done, by working together, just as we do up here, driving for consensus, to represent our coastal cities. So I ask for your continued support and conversations, communications, to keep me informed. I am going to be in Sacramento to serve each and every one of you. And every person knows, especially staff, that they have a hotline to my phone at any time. I will not be changing my cellphone number, so it's open for anyone to call me. So I will be resigning my seat formally. The city clerk, Brown, has assisted me tomorrow, and I will be sworn in Monday, as Assembly Member for the 72nd District, 72nd District, and I plan to have an open invitation, I'm inviting all of you now. On Sunday, December 11th, will be a public community swearing-in, here in the council chambers, and Mayor Maldune will be assisting, and former Assemblyman Jim Silva, who also served in this district, will be swearing me in again, and former Governor Pete Wilson will be here. And this will be a community swearing-in, for everyone to come, as long as we can fit them all in, they're planning to come, we'll get a permit, and do it the right way, but I want to extend an open invitation to anyone who wants to come, Sunday, December 11th, at 4:00 p.m. So thank you, from the bottom of my heart, for the privilege and honor of serving all of you, for our great city. I am humbled, but I will be continuing to think of you every day, and serve you to the best of my ability. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Brenner.
I would just like to say what a pleasure it has been working with Diane, for not only the last four years, but before I was on council, I worked with her as a community member, and she is by far one of the hardest-working people, not just women, people, that I have ever known in my life, and she almost always, maybe there might be some time I don't know about, but almost always has the good of the community at heart, and she looks for those things where she can make a difference. And I just want to say that it has been such a pleasure working with you, I really have treasured our time together, and I'm looking forward to what you do in Sacramento.
Thank you. In addition to the certificates we have from two fellow legislators, we have a presentation from Congresswoman Steele's office. Is Sonia Turwisky here? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sonia Turwisky, here on behalf of Congresswoman Michelle Steele today. I am particularly here for you, and just to congratulate you, and present this certificate on behalf of Congresswoman. Congratulations, and thank you so much. I think just while you were listing everything that you've done for the city, we have no doubt that you're going to continue to do that for the entire 72nd Assembly District, and I get to call you my Assemblymember, so I'm excited, and totally rooting for you, and looking forward to what you do in Sacramento, and you're going to continue to rock it the way you have here. I'm going to just go ahead and read the certificate here. It reads, "In honor of your service to the people of Newport Beach, we commend your outstanding efforts and hard work for the people. In recognition of your commitment to the people of Orange County and beyond, we wish you all the best and continued success. Thank you for your service." Of course.
Thank you, Sonia.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe Councilman Avery would also like to add a couple words.
Just a couple words. Diane looks like a very nice lady, she is a very nice lady, but she's a tiger. And she hunts her prey, and gets answers to questions, and she kills it. So Sacramento is very fortunate, and the state capital's fortunate, we're all fortunate, she'll be representing us, because she will get things done. In all her years in the corporate world, she's demonstrated just tremendous abilities, and certainly the last eight years on council, any task she takes on, she just hunts it down. I mean, she's up and jogging around Lido Island at 04:45, I think, every morning, so it's, it's really been something to, to see this over the years. She's irrepressible, and so that's exactly, she's also very common sense, and we really need that now, because there's a lot of nonsense going on in Sacramento, and as far as I'm concerned, so we need, and it's good to have more balance up there, and I think Newport Beach will be very well represented, along with the rest of California, with her work. So, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, notes for the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person, to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Councilman Neil, do you have any announcements or reports?
Real briefly, the TCA held its annual workshop at Marina Park. Appreciate staff's efforts to make sure that we were able to accomplish that. And then, upcoming on Sunday, we have the Corona Del Mar Christmas Walk. I hope everyone can join. Also on Sunday at 4 o'clock, the Balboa Island tree lighting ceremony will occur over at the fire station. And last but not least, mark your calendars for December 14th, the opening night of the Christmas Boat Parade. Thanks.
Thank you, and folks, we have a little bit till we get to comments. Thank you, Ms. Harp. Councilman Duffield. Councilman Dixon.
Just my last report, we had an aviation committee meeting last, a week ago, Monday, and tied up some loose ends for the year, and, and staff will be working on the, with the ad hoc committees, who have been very active this year, and on new assignments, so somebody else will be the new chairman of, chairperson of the aviation committee, and there's a lot of good committee members, we're willing to work hard, so I'll miss them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brenner.
Yes, I have a slide on a presentation that I made. Our current Assemblywoman, Cottie Petrie-Norris, has, every year since she's been elected, done an honorary ceremony on Veterans Day for Veterans of the Year, from each of the cities that are in her district, and she invites a council member from that city to make the presentation. I was able to make the presentation to Brian Fleming, who is a veteran that is now serving with Post, American Legion Post 291, on the Peninsula, and I just want to give you a brief bit of information about him. He joined the Marine Corps at 17-years-old in 1998, served six years as infantry, two years as marksmanship instructor, field training battalion, oversea, four overseas deployments, three deployments in Iraq. He is, he's decorated with the Purple Heart, the NAVMI Commendation Medal, the NAVMI Achievement Medal, Combat Action Ribbon, Iraqi Campaign Medal, Good Conduct, Humanitarian Service Medal, and other various decorations. He has been a member of the local American Legion since 2007, and his goal now is in serving veterans as a civilian, so it's, it's where his passion and his heart lies now, and he's a very active member of the American Legion Post 291. It was such a joy to meet him, and you know, generally when we do these ceremonies, we're awarding certificates to World War II veterans, and people that have been around for a very long time, so it was kind of nice for us to have Brian there, because he was born, I think, in 81 or something, so he was definitely the youngest person there, and it was a pleasure to see someone that is serving our current military, and helping them adjust and deal with all of the adjustments when they come back from military duty. Then I did have a slide on the annual Christmas Walk, December 4th, 11 to 5, it's the 43rd annual Corona Del Mar Christmas Walk, which is pretty amazing, and music, and all kinds of things, so please come down and join us for that. I do have one A1 item, so at our last meeting, we had the resolution on Iran, and we did not pass that resolution, because there was some dispute about the verbiage that was in it. So because I voted with the majority on that, I was allowed to ask that it be reconsidered. So I talked to our city attorney this week, and found out that if we wanted to bring it back... it back and change the resolution so that it is more similar to the Irvine Resolution and talks about human rights violations and supporting the people of Iran and doing everything we can in that regard, we couldn't do it through bringing it back and re-discussing it tonight because it would have to be changed too much. So what the consensus was, was that I would do an A1 and ask that the new resolution with the new verbiage be brought back to council at a future date. I'm not sure if it's the next meeting or the next one. And then the council can decide if they are happy with the verbiage on that one and if they feel like they can support this resolution in that revised form. So I am asking that this item be A1 so that it can be discussed at a future council meeting.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Folks, we respect your request that instead of applause, if you feel a desire to support something, you can raise your hands and do thumbs up or wave your hands. We try to keep a quieter court if possible. Okay, so just so we're clear, so you're A1-ing a slightly different language so we can come back. Often you can't do it unless it's changed.
Yes.
And so that will be the council meeting that we will be addressing this issue.
So it would come back in December for a vote to bring it back in January. So the first meeting in January is when the substantive item will be considered.
Okay, so there would be a raising our hands, straw poll done at the December meeting.
In December, and then substantively, the resolution would come back in January. So that'd probably be the best time for people who have thoughts about it to come back and speak, the first meeting in January.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Avery.
I have none.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Blom.
Surprisingly, I have a slide. I know, it's not my style. But this one I can get excited about. It's Operation Christmas. So we're collecting toys and sports equipment and apparently DVDs as well through all of our public facilities. And these will be donated out during the Christmas holiday to people that need a gift that can't sell. I encourage everyone out there, you know, when you're picking up something for the family, grab a couple extra, you know, if there's someone that's not quite enjoying it the same way as we might. So we have a lot of spots to donate on most of our city facilities, the Civic Center, Oasis, the Newport Coast Community Center, Marina Park, all of our libraries, fire stations, and our police department. So it is the season of giving and giving lots of love. So thank you.
Thank you. And I have a feel-good story that was sent from a resident to Mark Vakovic. He's our utilities director. And basically, I'll summarize it because we have a larger crowd and I know people want to get to official business. A resident had let one of her engagement rings, not one of, her only engagement ring, find its way down one of her pipes in her home. And unfortunately, she could not locate it with the use of plumbers. She reached out to our staff, and Mike Lynch said that he would send crew over to double-check the lines. The City Newport Beach Utilities Team could not be more accommodating to this residence. They're patient, courteous, and empathetic. And when she checked with utility group time and time again, they never forgot to sympathize for her loss of her precious item or to be impatient in any way. Then on last Friday, Shane Weber and Jaime Avina were in front of the resident's home conducting a normal maintenance. This resident shared the story of losing her ring 15 months ago, and Shane said he remembered. About an hour later, I got a knock at the door asking if I, this is her, not me, about an hour later, I got knocked door asking if I had a picture of the ring. I showed him a photo with excitement and anticipation. Shane reached into his pocket and pulled out my ring, her ring, wishing her a happy Friday. Sounds like I seen it from The Bachelor, right? She says it was amazing they were able to find the ring after all that time. It was not only happy Friday, but indeed one of the best days of her life. So she cannot thank our team enough for their honesty and diligence in finding the ring and just wanted to express her gratitude to the utilities crew for something that she'll never forget. And obviously, the council feels the same about our staff and utilities crew. Thank you to those members who did the honorable and romantic thing. Okay, we now have matters which council members have asked to place on a future agenda, and these are non-discussion items or up for debate, I should say. And we have a conflict, I believe, from one of the council members on this item. Councilman O'Neal.
Yeah, I have to declare a conflict because of membership at Pacific Club.
Okay, no, only on A1, only on this. So I have asked the council to consider directing staff to work with an Airport Village Community Plan Group to develop a memorandum of understanding for a community plan in the airport area. Oh, yeah, I see your request to speak. Councilwoman Brenner.
Kevin, I just wondered if we could ask Simone to give us a little bit of information about this before we raise our hands and vote.
You're able to ask a clarifying question, but it probably should be directed to Councilwoman, or Mayor Muldoon.
Well, my question is, if we move this forward, the way it's structured is not locked in stone. My understanding is that members of the community and other development members that own property in the airport area can also be added to this group that is going to consider this community plan and that it's not going to be something that is just run by one particular builder or in a way that it does not have input from the community.
Yes, as I had envisioned, it's the authority to govern. These important issues are still retained by the city and the different entities that will be reviewing it. It's a consultative opportunity for a major stakeholder in the airport area, but by no means is closed or takes the authority away from the city. And what would happen is staff, I believe, would draft something for us to consider, correct, Simone, you're nodding your head, yes, at the next council meeting. I have no idea what that technical information will look like, but that's what was envisioned.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so let's raise your hand if you support this item.
That it's 6-0. Everyone supports it.
Thank you.
And just before we get to the consent calendar, I just wanted to reemphasize for the public, I'm not sure if everyone understood exactly what happened earlier, but Councilmember Brenner basically put on the agenda for reconsideration or for a new consideration of resolutions supporting the will of Iran and the Iranian-American community. And so that will come back, it looks like, probably first meeting in January, which is January 10th. I know there's a lot of people here for that issue. I just wanted to mention that.
Folks, okay, folks, folks, folks.
I just wanted to clarify what happened so that you knew that it looks like it'll be coming back January 10th, 2023, a resolution.
Okay, folks, yeah, before we, I'll add some more color to that as well. And please, please hold your comments for the appropriate time when you come to the podium. So what will happen is just like you win us a straw poll on an issue to move forward, this is the way the council policy requires this to be done, meaning that when Councilwoman Brenner had the ability to reconsider her votes, the fastest it can be done procedurally under council policy is the way it's being done. At the December 13th meeting, you would see a straw vote similar to what you saw just now on the new language. And presumably, if there are, is that to be three or four, I don't recall?
Uh, three.
If there are three or more, it will move on to the subsequent meeting, which I understand you feel is not as urgent as you would like it to be. We are bound by those rules given the process. So you will see the number of hands supporting the new amended language at that council meeting. And then for a resolution to be formally passed, although you can see there's a majority not supporting it that night, for a resolution to be formally passed, it would happen at the January meeting. And these dates for council meetings are set a year in advance, and we are restricted by the council policies. Okay, Madam Clerk, please give notes regarding public comments on the consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 20. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And just to, again, to explain the process to those in the audience, folks, this is going to be a set of items. It's items 1 through 20, and it's not public comment on non-agenda items yet. If you wish to speak this evening about foreign policy issues, that will be discussed after we deal with this grouping of items. So it's called the consent calendar. We're going to do that first, and then there'll be public comment opportunity. Councilman O'Neal, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts announced related on items 1 through 20?
None.
Councilman Duffield.
I have a recusal on item 17 for real personal property.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon.
I'd like to pull 19, please.
19, thank you. Councilwoman Brenner.
None.
Councilman Avery.
I have none.
Mayor Pro Tem Blom.
I have none.
And I have just one clarifying, not clarifying statement, but that's not one for the motion. Just to let the public, remind them that on the item related to engaging a public affairs firm, one of the reasons we're doing this is to mention the, or is to pursue advocacy for rehab enforcements and regulations given to us by the states. So that's relevant for this evening as well. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to move the balance of consent with the changes to the minutes. A recusal by Councilman Duffield for real property interests on 17, and we'll pull item 19 for Councilwoman Dixon.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Brenner. Okay, public comments that would like to be made on those items, please come forward now.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, members of the council. My name is Jim Moser. I would recommend you also pull for discussion item number nine, which is your adoption of a new emergency operations plan. For reasons unknown to me, the actual plan was not printed out and part of the packet for the public to see, although it's only about 122 pages long, which is not much thicker than many of the things that are normally printed out. What I wanted to say is that the emergency operations plan is closely related to an obscure group called the Emergency or Disaster Council, which the city has told the state and the federal government that Newport Beach has. And having an emergency council is tied to the city, as I understand it, qualifying for pre- and post-emergency funding from both the state and the federal government. Normally, the emergency council in most cities is a citizens advisory group to the council that is presided over usually by the mayor. Oddly, in Newport Beach, it is the city council itself that is the emergency council. And it's been three and a half years since the staff presented you with a study session about the emergency council and how it is supposed to function to advise you, but it's odd, since you are the council, how you would be advised. At that meeting three and a half years ago, there was a promise that there was going to be, to get public input on the emergency operation plan, a town hall to seek community input on emergency planning and disaster preparedness. I don't know if that happened or not, but the council at that time, which was pretty much the current council with the exception of Councilmember Blom, unanimously voted to appoint a committee to look into this emergency council and why our council had never met as an emergency council or reviewed our emergency operation plan. I don't know about the town hall, but I know that committee never happened, and so that recommendation never came back. We heard from the city manager that you were going to meet as an emergency council. The staff was begging you to do this so that you would have community input. I think this needs some discussion of why none of that happened and when it is going to happen. And as to our current plan, I don't know if any of you remember, two of you back then, three and a half years ago, wanted to make sure that our plan had a plan for the harbor in the event of a hurricane, which was not obvious. I cannot tell from the current plan whether we have such a plan or not, so you might want to follow up on that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the consent calendar only? Okay, see none. We'll bring it back for a vote. We have a motion, a second. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the many ordinance titles for items 3 through 6. Ordinance 2022-23, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, and many Newport Beach municipal codes. Sections 1.12.20(c) and 5.12.230e, to remove reference to licensed supervisor and licensed inspector. Ordinance 2022-24, amending section 12.52.040, Corona Del Mar of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, to designate portions of the streets as one-way traffic only. Ordinance 2022-25, adopting zoning code amendment CA 2022-4, to amend sections 20.18.030, 20.38.40, and 20.38.50 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, to conform with state law and correct errors related to setbacks. 22.26, amending Title 15 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, to adopt amendments to Chapter 1, Division 2 of the 2020 California Building Code designated as the Newport Beach Administrative Code, to adopt the 2022 California Historical Code, the 2022 California Existing Building Code, or the 2022 California Green Building Standards Code, and the 2022 California Energy Code, to adopt with local amendments, the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, the 2022 edition of the 2022 California Building Code, the 2022 edition of the California Residential Code, the 2022 California Electrical Code, the 2022 California Mechanical Code, and the 2022 California Plumbing Code, to adopt with local amendments, the 2021 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, and to amend chapters 15.19, electrical vehicle charging, and 15.50, flood plane management, and ordinance 2022-27, amending Title 9 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, to adopt the 2022 edition of the California Fire Code, except for in Title 24, Part 9 of the California Code of Regulations with local amendments. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Okay, item number 19, pulled by Councilwoman Dixon. Would you, Councilwoman Dixon, would you like to respect, excuse me, request a staff report on this?
Yes, but before we do that, thank you, Mayor. I just want to, and I'm delighted we have a full house here tonight, albeit on another matter, another important matter. But it's really important that everyone know that this item relates to a proposed gift agreement between the city and the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter that's been negotiated as a gift agreement. I don't know, at least in my eight years, may have to go back further if this has really ever been done before, where a group of citizens took it upon themselves to raise $2.9 million for the acquisition of land and the construction of a new animal shelter that has been totally funded, financed, raised the money, and they're, through their complete generosity, are donating that building, including the land, to the City of Newport Beach, which will continue as a city to operate through our animal control department, within the police department, an animal shelter for our residents. This is an amazing accomplishment. The conversations began several years ago with Evelyn Hart, may she rest in peace, and Jean Watt, and a number of other friends of animals, four-legged animals. And they were saying, why can't the city do something to have a better animal shelter? We had a good animal shelter, but it wasn't large enough and equipped enough, and we were renting property over on Riverside Drive over in the Santa Ana Heights area. And these residents have worked, I guess it's been five or six years now, and working with the police department, raising money. They raised sufficient funds from private sources to purchase, acquire the land in that same street on Riverside Drive. They demoed the land, the structure that was there, and have built an amazing, world-class animal shelter for our little four-legged friends. And tonight, while it's on the consent calendar, I pulled it because it is such a significant public-private partnership, of which we are seeing many more examples, the library lecture hall, and the Junior Lifeguard headquarters, and the library in Corona Del Mar. And now this animal shelter has the result of the public, private, the public monies from the city in terms of operations, continuing operations, the private money to fund the development of this building. And it just gives me such pride to be able to make sure everybody understands this. So if someone on the staff, oh, there she is, I should have been looking over this. Lauren, if you want to just give a little bit background, you don't have to go in the deep, but just whatever I may have missed in this discussion, just to amplify the importance of what the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter are truly gifting to the city.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon. Mayor, members of the City Council, Lauren Wooding Whitlinger with the City's Community Development Department, as Councilwoman Dixon explained. explained, this is a proposal from the Friends of Newport Beach, which is a nonprofit group that was formed several years ago to partner with the city in the city's operation of animal control services and animal sheltering. Uh, the city previously contracted all of this out to a third party, and, um, after some, some issues, we determined that we wanted to terminate our existing contract and, uh, bring it in-house. So, the police department has been operating, um, with a ton of assistance from the Friends and other resident volunteers, our, our animal shelter. Um, and the Friends have put together, uh, the funds, as you, as you said, and raised enough money to purchase a property and build a brand-new, uh, state-of-the-art animal shelter facility. Um, and we also have John Langford with Friends of the, uh, Newport Beach Animal Shelter, who's here this evening that would like to make a few comments. Um, and I'm available for any, any questions.
That's fine.
Great.
Mr. Langford?
Okay, yeah. Johnny, want to come forward?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Mr. Mayor Muldoon and city council, uh, my name is John Langford, president of the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter, and I'm here on behalf of the full board of directors of FONBOSS to thank you for all of your time and efforts over these last six or seven years. Uh, it's been, can't believe it's been that long, but, uh, you guys have cut promotional videos for us and come to our events and spend a lot of time and dedicate a lot of hours, uh, to this group, and we'll, we'll never forget it. So, on behalf of, uh, the rest of our board, Jean Watt, and you know all these people, Jean Watt, Walt Howold, Sharon Estrada, Robin Grant, Eva Le Bon, and major donor, Eva Le Bon, Tom Fishbacher, Sandy Meadows, and of course, um, Evelyn Hart, who you see on your screen, um, our colleague and, and dear friend, and, um, and I know she was dear to all of you, too, so we'll, we'll never forget her contributions, and she always lit up a room with her, uh, smiling face, and she would have been here tonight if she could, and, uh, we'll, we'll never forget her either. So, thank you for, uh, for everything you've done for us.
Thank you, John. Okay, pub- public comments on this item, please come forward. Okay, see none. Do we have a motion?
I agree.
Pulled by Councilwoman Dixon. Is there a second? Second by Councilman O'Neill. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you. All right, now is the time for public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments on non-agenda items, please come forward.
Kevin, could I say one thing before we start the public comments to the public?
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to let you all know that four of us will no longer be on the council at, at, for the January meeting. There will be four new council members that will be seated in December, on December thirteenth. Those people, because that's the majority of the council, really need to be educated as to what it is that you have to say, and, um, I might suggest that after December thirteenth, when they have their official city emails, that those of you who have sent us emails on this topic might want to resend that to citycouncil@newportbeachca.gov, because it will go to those four additional people as well. And, um, and, and I also am hoping that one of you talks about the, um, there's a march coming up that we'd like to give the people that are watching at home information about that. That was all I wanted to say.
Okay. Yes?
Great sheets. I believe you guys got some photos for me? Coming up?
Of the oil stone?
Right. We got, uh, uh, oil ship and a container ship, and we never know what's in the containers. Uh, Geiger counter, I've been pushing with the FBI, local authorities, sheriff's departments, all over the nation. This will be out in the middle of the ocean where there's no apparent offshore oil wells like Long Beach, Huntington Beach, and the Gulf Ocean. Uh, will destroy all our rain cycles. We don't live without water, folks, none of us. Nothing lives without rain and snow. Next, please. Salvation Army is a drug dealing filter. It's a ninety-nine percent failure, and we all know that drugs are killing kids. Fentanyl is dropping them like flies right now. That stuff is killing our nation's children. This place funds the drugs to get back on the street, and they use people for slaves, and you don't put people with the same problems in the same room. Common sense, next. Then we got Geiger counter. That would be the answer to finding any nuclear device in any semi-truck, container, freight train, anything that's mobile with a box. Next, please. Thank you. Uh, containers can be put anywhere with a nuclear device in them. They can be buried underground in the federal forest, national forest. I'll be speaking at Azusa. Next, and then, there we go. Pipeline up in Alaska. If they dump that thing in the ocean, raw crude oil with radiation on it, we're not going to see any more rain. Next. You guys get the picture. It's pretty much repetitive there, and, and I'm staying with this. And I've got to talk to the mayor, chief of police, and city attorney. I'm with the FBI right now. I've got the whole answer for conspiring criminals. Cat urine. It is not human. It is not near human, and they are in human form. And so is a lizard. That's a Vulcan. And I'm not going to back any of these people up, ever. And, uh, I think they're behind a lot of this stuff I'm talking about. And I appreciate you guys hearing me out.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Next speaker, please come forward. Please hold your applause. Yes?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. First of all, congratulations, Diane. I'm so glad you're going to be our assemblywoman. You might not be mine, but I'm still rooting for you. My name is Hengam Abraham. Many of you know me as Henny. I have the honor and privilege of knowing many of you, and I have worked personally on many of your campaigns. I was fourteen years old when I was fortunate enough to leave Iran and come here. So, I'm standing in front of you, not as a thirty-six-year-old free Iranian-American woman, but as a twelve-year-old Iranian girl that got stopped for the first time by the besiege in Iran. I was told if she doesn't cover her hair, because I shaved my head in protest of covering my hair, that I was going to be jailed. I remember my mom crying that night, telling my dad, I'm an only child, that if you don't get her out of this country, she's not going to make it to her twenties. Well, God's grace smiled on her, and here I am, standing in front of you. On October sixteenth, Sunday, I personally emailed every single one of you from my email, abrahamforcm@gmail.com, and I requested you to take a stand and condemn the killing murderous terrorist government of Iran that's killing children, women, and unarmed men and women. Now, I watched the city council meeting of the eleven fifteenth, and I, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here. I was dealing with a sickness. And I listened to the five minutes of very valid argument about City of Newport Beach not taking stance on international issues. Well, let me tell you something. This is not an international issue. This is a human rights crisis. If you were sitting on this dais during Nazi Germany, would you not have stood up for something? Ponder that for a second. A seven-year-old was shot, and they wouldn't release his body to his parents, so they had to hide it in ice at their home, because if you bury your young ones, they will take the body and they will allow you to mourn. In my culture, we mourn for forty days after somebody dies. Ponder that. I appreciate you, Councilwoman Brennan, for wanting to bring this back. I know you were one of the five votes against it, but I'm going to be very honest with you. First of all, some of you are not going to be on this dais on January, so that's a little too late. Also, I look at seven intellectual individuals sitting on this dais. You had this October to come up with your own language for a resolution to condemn a murderous governor, government, like many other cities did. City of Irvine added their own language. If there was an issue with the language of a resolution, you could have easily changed it and made it their own. Now, how would you react to this? Us Persian communities of Newport Beach will stop spending money and shopping in Newport Beach till the agenda is back in January, and we'll see how that's going to affect the financial finances of the city of Newport Beach. I appreciate the thought, but it's a little too late, because some of you will not be on this dais to support us in January. Mayor Muldoon, Councilwoman Dixon, my new assemblywoman, I am grateful for your support. But next time, please reach out to someone if you have a question about a resolution, about a community you're unfamiliar with, and I'll personally be more than happy to help you with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, folks. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Sir, I'm running this meeting. Don't direct people to speak, and please don't lead applause, okay? I want it to be civil meeting. I supported this the first time, so, yeah, I'm not-
That's why we're here. We find-
Sir, okay, we're going to call a ten-minute recess. We'll be here all night if we behave this way. We have a ten-minute recess. We'll be back. Okay, we are returned, and this council meeting is going to run like it's run every Tuesday where we have a council meeting. I respectfully just ask that you follow those rules decorum, and everyone's rights to speak will be respected. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Appreciate being here. Moved to the United States since June of nineteen seventy-eight, when I was a little kid. I live in Newport Beach, and I'm a constituent. I appreciate all the hard work Councilwoman Dixon has done for all of us, but there are forty million women like you in Iran who are being executed. There are kids who are as young as four years old that are being shot at with a military-style bullets. It goes through four people. I expect my people, which is you sitting there, to pass the resolution. It's about humanity. It's about women. It's about life and freedom, and that's why I am here in this country. It happened that I picked up the picture of Mehdi. He's seventeen years old. I have a daughter who's seventeen years old. He was killed in a city very close to where my dad was born. His parents do not have what I have. This is one world. This is Mother Earth, and we each have to do what we can to support each other. It doesn't matter. They are so many thousand miles away. I came to this country for this, and I expect each and every one of you to think again when you see your mothers, sisters, and daughters, that there are people on the other side of the world that don't have what we have. But when we can help, we should and we will. I have a vote in this country, and I promise you, I will cross my party line to vote for whoever is supporting humanity. Please remember. I want to thank you for your time. I appreciate all the services you have done, and may God bless this country and the world, because if we don't have each other to rely on, we have nothing. Nothing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please hold applause. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. Uh, my name is Hosro Mirfar. All of you know me as Eddie of Spyglass Hill. Um, my thanks also to the Honorable Mayor Kevin Muldoon and our Councilwoman Diane Dixon for your vote to be on the right side of the history. I am also thankful to Councilman Will O'Neill, who wrote the very first strong solidarity letter, which is floating around on the internet, about a month and a half ago. We appreciate your care for us. Um, I don't want to go through what's happening, more or less you know, and the picture says the one thousand words, some of those pictures of the underaged, underaged, seventy-plus official numbers. But two things I want to bring up. One is the five words that is encoded in U.S. Constitution that we all respect and we must uphold: liberty and justice for all, not for just Americans, for all human. Interestingly, this part of the U.S. Constitution, according to some research, has been inspired by an Iranian, Thomas Jefferson, when he was writing it, he had three books out of six hundred fifty books that they came up with: the Holy Bible, the Republicanism from John Locke, the great philosopher of England, and Cyropedia, the Life of Cyrus the Great, the one who established the very first Charter of Human Rights. And right now, in his country, that basic human rights are being violated. So, I am requesting your attention to U.S. Constitution to uphold those five words for Iranian people. The second thing I want to bring up is the population of us, Iranian-American. If not the largest, most probably, one of the largest population in Southern California, especially in Orange County, Newport Beach. And what we have is the power of our vote. We remember how you're going to react, so I am requesting your urgent reconsideration, if you can move it off if possible, because this is a matter of time and urgency. I thank you all.
Thank you, Eddie. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Kousha Alecband. I'm a Newport Beach resident, and I'm proud to call this city my home for the last twenty-three years. Um, I'm also a proud Iranian-American, and as an Iranian-American, I was really disappointed by the refusal of, um, this city council to vote against the condemnation of the Islamic Republic of Iran. I like to say Islamic Republic versus Iran, um, in the rape, torture, imprisonment, and murder of unarmed citizens, because they were protesting for gender inequality, because of gender inequality. Newport Beach is made up of the largest Iranian-American um, community in the entire, um, nation. And as you know, we are some of the most educated, successful, law-abiding citizens here. And cities that have smaller demographics like Fullerton and Costa Mesa and Long Beach have passed this resolution no problem. I guess there was a wording issue, but I wish you had told us this, you know. Now, cities with the same demographics like, um, Beverly Hills, Calabasas, Laguna Niguel, and Irvine have passed this. In fact, last week, when I was at the Irvine City Council, there was a city councilman that said this beautifully. He said, "This is one of those resolutions where we act, where we think locally and we act globally," because this is a global issue. It's not a political issue. This is about human rights violations. It's about gender inequality. It's what it's about. It's very simple. And we urge you, please, expedite this. Don't let it go into January. This is kind of this, one of those technicalities where I'm like a little bit upset about, actually. You know, um, Ms. Brennan, in your response to a lot of the constituents that wrote you the emails, um, what you said is, this is a, um, city, it's not a city, uh, we don't deal with anything that's not a city government issue, and a lot of the Iranian-American constituents that live in Newport Beach, that work in Newport Beach, that have businesses in Newport Beach, would disagree with you vehemently on this. And we won't forget this, because as Iranian-American citizens in Newport Beach, we want to be seen, we want to be supported, not just with a letter, which I thank you, but your vote is what counts. You have to put your money where your mouth is. It's that simple. And when you say that there is going to be a conflict in the community if we vote on this, what exactly are you saying? The State Department states that the Iranian Revolutionary Guard is a terrorist, um, um, what do you call it, organization? So, who, how are you creating a conflict? Are you sympathizing with a few Islamic, um, sympathizers in this community? Are you sympathizing with a few Islamic sympathizers in this community? Are you fully sympathizing with us? Please expedite this. This is not okay for it to be up to January 10th or whatever it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Thank you all for your time, and thanks to all my Iranian friends for always supporting each other. I'm actually here, I'm gonna make it very fast and quick. Living in Newport or not living in Newport, working in Newport or not working in Newport, we are here today as one unity, as human beings, seeking other humans to support us. They're killing our kids. They're killing our young generation. They're killing older people. Older people cannot even go to work. There is no money. Everything is just getting, keep getting more and more and more expensive. So if we can sit here and worry about animal shelter, I'm sure that you are caring enough to care about other humans' life too, in other countries. I just wanna ask all of you a question. I'm sure that you all have a child or a dear one who has a child in your family. So please, picture this. I want, I understand that there is rules and regulation. I totally get that, but I want you to think about it for a second. For each rule and regulation, there is an exception, and you can make exception for this time to just give us, to just give us like a quicker answer, and don't make us wait till January, because January, by January, we don't know how many other kids are gonna be killed in that country. We are sticking to you guys. We need your help. We need help from every single being in this planet. We need you to be their voice too. Please support us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Pejman Giyasi. Initially, I'd like to apologize if I have caused any conflict. I'd like to thank the mayor and the councilor for being here, taking their time. One thing to note is, I think people are not, it's not easy for them to resonate, because sometimes they don't experience the exact pain or whatnot, so empathizing could maybe be harder sometimes, but I guess it could be harder for us when we see that issues that are, I'm not saying not important, but concepts such as animal shelters might not be a priority towards children being murdered. This is an image of Keon Pirfalak. He was murdered at the age 10. His mother had to collect ice to keep him, his body cold before the government was still his body. This is extremely painful, and this is what makes us, as Iranians, it's hard for us to control our emotions at such moments. It hits home for us, so it's not so easy. One other thing to note, I would like to say, is that what we need more than anything is actions, not just support. Again, we appreciate it very, very much, but we need actual votes in the House. We need to be actually heard, as we all say, "Actions speak louder." I'm here today because I would like to speak especially on behalf of the LGBTQ representation of Iran. Back in 2009, I was imprisoned, and I was taken in for a very, very long time, and at that time, remember, the former president spoke and said that LGBTQ does not exist in Iran. Well, I'm one here, standing right here. As an Iranian-American, not someone who's just considered an Iranian came to America, but someone who's literally half-American, half-Iranian, and also served in this country with the purpose to defend for what's right, I demand the city council and higher powers to make sure that they also stand for what's right. This is a demand, not just please. This is not a beg. This is not a plead. This is for us to make sure that you make this a priority and to make sure that nothing else comes above human rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Dr. Angie Sadegi, a resident and a business owner in the beautiful city of Newport Beach for six years. I'm an Iranian-American who has lived in the United States for 32 years and here to shine light on the ongoing genocide in Iran by the Islamic Republic regime. As you know, the Islamic Republic regime is killing innocent unarmed men, women, and children. They are imprisoning peaceful protesters, brutally beating them and even raping the girls in jails. I want to make sure that you understand that this is not a political issue. This is about human rights. Thank you, Councilmembers Diana Dixon, for introducing the resolution. Thank you, Councilmember Mr. Kevin Muldoon, for supporting the resolution. I'm deeply disappointed that we have not reached a seven out of seven yes vote, so I'm here to kindly request your participation. Now more than ever, the innocent and voiceless women and children of Iran need your help, so please revisit Agenda Number Six from the 1115 meeting. Thank you deeply for your service.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Members of City Council. As I'm speaking, the Islamic Republic is ordering for torture, murder, for raping, is ordering for rape, torture, and murder of its own unarmed citizens. It is clear that the people of the city of Newport Beach stand with the Iranians who are fighting for their freedom. Ayatollahs are doing is against America, it's against freedom, and it's against the city of Newport Beach. I am here asking you to condemn this terrorist regime. Iranian community has been serving this city for over four decades, and we need to be heard. Thank you very much, and we need actions, and we need it now, and I very appreciate for the letters that you send, but we need actions and we need your vote. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the Honorable Councilmember, good evening. I am Iraj Nabi, an American-Iranian physician who has been here for 50 years, 15 of which in the great city of Newport Beach. My son, David Nabi, is also a vascular surgeon, serving the community. I respectfully ask this body to approve the resolution condemning the atrocity of Islamic Republic against the Iranian people. This fanatic oppressive regime, which uses armored vehicle, tanks, and heavy weaponry, has murdered 447 people, 40 of them children, and arrested 14,000 people in the last three months. We, in the United States, also have not been immune to the terrorist activity of Islamic Republic and their sidekick. Those of us who are old enough may remember, these are the same people who stormed our embassy in Tehran in 1979 and took 50 American hostages for 444 days. Historically, these criminals bombed the barracks in Beirut in 1983, killing 214 of our sailors, Marines, and soldiers. They also bombed our embassy in Kenya and Tanzania in 1989, killing 212 people, most of them American. In all honesty, condemnation of these atrocities and barbaric action is not a political issue. It's basic human right issue. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Honorable our mayor and other council member. My name is Shanam Biglari, and just like my other colleague, I'm a member of the healthcare community in Newport Beach, been providing and extending nuclear medicine to cancer patients and other patients in need. And I would say, what I see in Iran is, the government of Iran is like a cancer. I see that in face of the patient when they're diagnosed with cancer. If the physician tells them that you have to do this test, and the insurance tells them, well, you have to come back next month to get this test done, just imagine the feeling in the, every cell of that, you know, patients, that he knows that his body is being destructed by cancer, but he has to wait. This is what's happening in Iran. Iranian people cannot wait. My colleague and my friends here were demanding a fast resolution and reaction by the city council of the Newport Beach. Some of my friends were stating here that if United Nations, which has far more responsibility and concern for the humanity in the world, if they can have an emergency session and rule out unanimously against this dictatorship in Iran, why can't we, in city of Newport Beach? Why can't we do this? Why can't we? I know holidays are coming. We will have more time on our hand. I know some of the bylaws are really restrictive, but you guys are capable of making this happen. Make this holiday something for my friends and family and my Iranian, you know, citizens to celebrate that city of Newport Beach, along with other cities, stand by them in solidarity and supported their fight against this dictatorship regime. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Human beings are a member of a whole in creations of one essence and soul. If one member is afflicted with pain, other members uneasy will remain. If you've no sympathy for human pain, the name of human you cannot retain. This was a popular poem written by Persian poet Sadi in 1833. Good evening, Members of the City Council and Mayor. My name is Rose. I am 21-years-old, and I'm here to talk about the events that are happening in Iran. If people refuse to practice a certain religion, they're brutally murdered. People my age should be pursuing their education, building their careers, but they're too worried if they are able to wake up tomorrow. Lena is a three-year-old girl in jail right now. What government thinks having a three-year-old in jail is correct? Apparently Iran's. Where is UNICEF when we need it the most? UNICEF? More like UNIDEF. These are small examples of what's happening in Iran right now. There's more issues that beyond meets the eye, all because of this regime. Now, please, City Council and Mayor, we really need your help. Please don't be blind on this topic. Please don't turn your cheek the other way. Really, really need your help. Not tomorrow, not next week, not next month, but now. I personally haven't seen my family in 17 years. I cannot even speak to them over the phone, because the Iranian government shuts the internet down. I have no access to them. All I can do is pray and hope that they're well and they're safe. So here I am today to represent my brothers and sisters of Iran and their God-given rights. So please, vote yes on the resolution condemning this government. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Nusha. I didn't prepare a speech for tonight. I was just observing, and I only have one question, and it's a quick one. Why this council member don't see our people dying? Over 400 people were murdered. Why don't you see it worthy of your votes? That is my only question, of you turning back on this brutal regime killing our kids, our women, every single day. As we speak right now, they execute 10 prisoners in Baluchistan. They execute them. They can't get the word out, because they don't have internet, and this is what happening. And we don't have much time, and we cannot wait till January. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Mona. Thank you for being, you guys, all here and for their time, and I appreciate that you are serving very well your people for peace and comfort. This is the one that we want from all United Nations, you guys all. I have just one question, and I want, please, to close your eyes. To, I'm going to back to the word that you guys tell us you should come back by January. Just close your eyes, that your house is under attack with some terrorist people, that they are killing your family members in front of your eyes, and you don't have any voice. Do you want to stay, stay till another day, or another week, or January? It's really easy. It's not something to think about it. It's a reality. It's, it's obvious than sun. It's obvious than breathing. Please, please come up and do something. We need action. We need action. Our kids, you had 30 people here, under 30-years-old, at least 20 minutes ago. They are this country's assets. Do you wanna government take the bullet to their brain, to their heart? Absolutely not. Please, this is time for action, and we want you guys, please, don't miss any, even one moment. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Mitra Musalee. Last Tuesday, I attended the Irvine City Council meeting where they had passed the resolution to condemn the government of Iran. All four members of the city council, they voted yes. They were for it, for the resolution. They had no doubt that as a city that cares for their community, they should pass this resolution and join the efforts of Congresswoman Porter and Kim to condemn the Iran regime. I had not attended your November 15 meeting, but I watched the recording, and I was so shocked to hear your reasoning on why you're not passing the resolution. It seems that you already know, and you've heard it from my friends already, about what's going on in detail back there in Iran, so I'm not gonna go over that right now, but I'm just gonna mention some of the reasonings that you had on why you're not passing the resolution. You mentioned you don't think the roles of the local government is to get involved in nation affairs, and your job is to just take care of the residents in Newport Beach. In response, I'll quote what Mayor Khan in the council meeting last week mentioned. "This is not a conflict between nations. This is a humanity issue." This is exactly her sentence. You said you don't have federal authority. In a smaller scale, we have Iranians that think the same as you. They're sitting right now in their homes. They think that they can't do anything here. Whatever has to happen, it has to happen from back there, from the people in Iran. That attitude is the same as what you guys mentioned last week, that you cannot do anything. If we, as a fellow Iranian right now, if we all had thought the same, if we weren't here, if we weren't involved every minute of our lives in the, for the past 60 days, the world wouldn't have known, a lot of people wouldn't have known who Mahsa Amini is. So I'm, if I, as individual, as a one person, that I was never involved in politics, I was, I'm not an activist, I'm not even good in speaking in public, if I can contribute, you as a city can contribute too. City of Irvine is asking that other cities to adopt this resolution, and they are going to explore ways to link up in other cities. Maybe through an existing, she mentioned that I Googled even this one, and it exists through US citizen of mayors, if I'm not mistaken, that you guys link up... that you guys link up all the cities through that organization and be our voice. Congratulations, Ms. Dixon, on your new role. Good luck in Sacramento. Please be our voice in Sacramento. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everyone, council members. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk. I'm Nahida Hani, Iranian-American citizen. I have my own business in Laguna Beach. As a human, I care about every single person. In Iran, we have a kind of police called the morality police that only exists with the Islamic Republic. And with this title, they have this sense of a power which they use to arrest, imprison, torture, rape, and even kill people. A number of those arrested are executed without trial in less than a few days. And the families are threatened that if they protest, their other children will have the same fate. These days, to deal with the protesters, they released dangerous prisoners from prison and gave them power, weapons, bottoms, and motorcycles, and told them that they are free to do whatever they want to people. This Islamic Republic has been training the most dangerous terrorists, and this is a serious danger for the whole world. Our people only want human rights and freedom. Thank you for your pay attention to our talking. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Maryam. I have been a citizen of the United States for more than 30 years. I remember the first time that I voted in the US. I realized I'm a free person. My vote matters. My voice matters. What I believe matters, something that Iranian people in Iran now and for the last 40 years have not experienced. They have no idea of that feeling, you know? They don't know that you can go to the street, you can stand in the middle of the street and oppose the views of the mayor, oppose the views of your president. And all they know is that as soon as you raise your voice, you're gonna be, you know, in front of a machine gun, like you're in the war. They're in a war with their own government now. What we're here, they are these pictures. They're human beings. This is seven-year-olds, Hasty. This is not just a picture. We want you, we brought these pictures. I don't know who brought them today. I really appreciate it. But we want you guys to see this. That's why we're raising it the whole time. We're not trying to disrespect, you know, this whole court. But we want, these are human beings, that they lose their voice, they lose their lives because they're just raising their voice. So and then now, tonight, I came here, and I thought that you didn't pass it last time, and I wanted to ask, why didn't you guys pass it? You know? Why two out of five was only, you know, for this resolution? And like Hango mentioned, you could have, you should, please, ask us. You know how many people, you know, it's in your, you know, you can reach out and explain, we can explain to you. We have videos. If you had time for half an hour, we can show you videos that they're killing people right in, you know, two feet away. They're killing kids in, you know, two feet away. So we really appreciate if you can have an emergency meeting, emergency, you know, any day, you know, we can come tomorrow morning. It has to be just like, you know, just like, you know, my friend said, this is like a cancer. If they tell you that go back in a month, and that was a great example, come back in a month, you know? I mean, it's unacceptable. We are, you know, the residents of, you know, United States. We are all citizens of United States. And this, your vote, your voice matters, and we want to hear it. We want to hear it now, please. You know, when you sleep tonight, please think about it tomorrow morning. Have a meeting, and please pass this. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next speaker.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Farhad Mafi. I have my technology company in Irvine with many clients in Newport Beach. I'm also a published author, and I've been writing against the barbaric Islamic system of Iran for the last 43 years. So this is not my first activity against this barbaric system. The fact that, you know, Fullerton, Irvine, Costa Mesa, you know, Mission View have passed this resolution, and Newport Beach is debating on verbiage of this, this is very, very disappointing. If there's anything we can do to help it, as far as, you know, expediting this by December and making sure that it's actually part of our agenda and gets passed on Wednesday, on December, that's what we are here for. We will help you, support you in any way that we can. Many of you, many of my American friends always ask, well, why should I care? One thing, I want every one of you, every one of the Americans in this room to understand is that Islamic Republic of Iran is not a regular government. Their issue is not limited to Iran. They have one agenda, and their agenda is to bring their version of Islam and make it a worldwide religion. They've been spending millions of dollars in this country, and their version of Islam is the fastest-growing religion right now in the United States. And while all of you are busy with your boats and with everything else, they are actually investing money because they have one mission, to destroy the fabric of the Western civilization. If, look at the way that Europeans are reacting toward, you know, what is happening in Iran today, because they are on the front line. They are seeing what is happening to the society. And US is next after Europe. So your position, you standing up against what's happening in Iran, is while it is symbolic, it is very important to show that certain things are not acceptable to us as Americans, to our value system and so on. And again, please keep in mind, this is a human rights issue. This is not just a country 15,000 miles away and so on. This is a human rights issue, and every single day that you delay this, it basically hurts every single Iranian that lives in this city and lives in Orange County. And please keep in mind, not only we vote, we spend money on campaigns. And we remember every single name, and we will remember whom we need to support, whom we need to spend money for their campaign, and how we're gonna basically endorse candidates that they stay with us when we ask for their support. Please keep that in mind as you when trying to, you know, consider bringing this to December agenda. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Kirkan Alyanakian. I'm not of Iranian descent. I don't live in Newport Beach, so I can threaten you with my vote. But some of the things that I heard tonight here is mind-boggling to me. You're sitting in a hundred to $150 million city hall. You're one of the wealthiest cities in our county, and you're afraid to pass a resolution condemning what's going on? This is not an international, this is not, this is a human rights issue, purely, simple, not complicated. I am, in all honesty, ashamed to live in Orange County having heard some of the things that I have heard today. And it's just... Second, one more thing is that our national policy has determined that the Iranian government right now, the Islamic Republic government, is a terrorist organization. And who are you afraid of? What are you afraid of? Are you afraid of you vote someplace or what? It's mind-boggling to me that as human beings, all seven of you, are not completely wholly endorsing such a resolution condemning what's going on in Iran. It makes me just shameful.
Thank you. No applause, please. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Walden, city councils. I was 18 years old in Iran when the morality police pulled me aside because I had red nail polish. They took me in their van, and I was so afraid that I was removing the nail polish with my fingers. You have a smile on your hand, because, on your face, because that's just unbelievable. If I pulled you in the street and I said, ma'am, you cannot dress like that. Let's go to the jail, you would think I'm crazy. When 9/11 happened, did they say we have to push it till next month, this meeting? No, this is an emergency. This is our emergency. I'm begging you to move the January 13 to a sooner date. When you go to sleep tonight, have that voice in your head that these people are begging you for just an emergency meeting. Move some meetings, you know, in different days. I've been working for 20 years in this Newport Beach for an American company. We move meetings all the time because of different issues that comes up. Please have that in your conscience.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Walden, Dan Dixon, and the rest of the city council member. My name is Michael Chigini. I live in Newport Beach. I've been here for 22 years. I'm also a developer in Newport Beach. My company called is City and Properties. You have heard of the company. I just want to make sure that we understand, and this is your issue and not just Iranian issue. 43 years ago, this government took 53 of American hostage. And that was the darkest day in the United States, maybe darkest after the Vietnam War. And those hostages are free. They are here. Some of us left the prison and came here and settled in Newport Beach. But we have not forgotten that there is a big prison back in Iran, and that we have over 80 million people in that prison, and they're suffering every day. And we are not only here because, you're right, you cannot go around the whole globe and there's so many issues behind human rights all over it. But when we came here, we brought peace of us. That peace is still here with us as Iran, as our country, as our homeland, as our people. And that peace now is part of you. We are part of your community. We are your doctors. We are your merchants. We are your developers. We are your contractors. We are part of you. How could you forget that to be a part of us? And I urge you to reconsider it and make sure that this resolution is passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. So I want to ask my friends to hold up the pictures that they have. We printed about 60 picture. I hope I can get through this. There are all under 21. As you guys are getting ready to collect toys for Christmas. I hope this dark force called Islamic Republic stop killing the kids. It's so good that you guys can reschedule it for January, but it's like getting gift two weeks after Christmas. You guys like to get a gift two weeks after Christmas? Every second matters to us. Every little action that you guys make matters to us. I don't ask you guys to do it for humanity. I do it, I ask for you, I ask you guys to do it for less fortunate kids. You guys are collecting toys for less fortunate kids. Do it for less fortunate kids on the other side of the world. This is for humanity, for kids. They're killing kids under 21, under 10, and they shut down the internet. Nobody knows how many have been killed. This is what we know. God knows how many they have killed. Again, January is awesome, but why not now? Why not tomorrow? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next speaker.
Good evening, and thank you for your opportunity that we talk here about the Iranian people. My name is Kurosh Kumerci, and as an Iranian-American, I'm coming here, we are coming here, that we voice from the homeland people in Iran, 85 million people, or my homeland people here, as you are. That, I have a question. Is a few years ago, we have a revolution in Iran, and President Obama said, okay, it's not my issue. It's internal issue, but we cannot support it. From that time to now, how many people in the Middle East, in Iran, do you know, killed by the government? How many American soldier killed by the Iranian government, Islamic Republic? And he said, I made a mistake. You want to do that right now? In 70, 70 days, they killed 500 people. But we know, I don't know how many is there. Is 20 years, 22 years there? Is 14 years? You know, after the, I don't know, January is about the 40 years, 40 days. You wanted to talk about that, and you get a vote? You are coming after the holiday. How many people killed in governor in duration at time? Please, please do that emergency. We need the vote for every city, for governor of the USA now, not tomorrow, not the day after tomorrow. We need now. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Honorable counsel, I'm an AP government student. We had to, for our project, we had to come and observe a city council meeting. So this was, all came into it as a shock to me that all of this was going on right now. I recommend the simple condemnation of what the Ayatollah has done in Iran. I understand your guys' job description lines up with signing contracts for the city roads, infrastructure. However, I think also the happiness of Newport Beach residences should be one of your top priorities. So I recommend that you guys condemn the actions and sign the bill, which I think does that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello to everybody. Thank you so much you give me this chance to talk. I'm not a speaker, but I want to share something with you. I've been here in United States, which is my home. I have two boys they raised here. When I left Iran 45 years ago, my husband was in military study in Fort Knox, Kentucky. And I was teacher in Iran. My husband was coroner in army. And when Khomeini walked to, came to Iran, the first day in my classroom, I was teacher for first grade teacher. My director, which she was from Hezbollah, she came to my room, and she told me, you need to... need to put this picture from Khomeini and Rafsanjani in your class, otherwise you're going to be fired. And then you need to have a hijab from tomorrow, cover your face, no makeup, and only teach Islamic music, no music. And I told myself, I'm a first grade teacher, music is language of the world. And children, they need to be expired with, exposed to music. They took my CD player from my room. And tomorrow, I said, I'm not going to put this picture up. If you want to put a Shah picture down, fine, but I'm not going to put Khomeini picture up. I'm tired of changing the picture and picture. I want teach the children. I want educate my children, how to love each other, how to be good to each other. I'm not going to teach Islamic Quran. Okay, I'm Islam, I, I am Muslim, but I don't want teach Islamic stuff to the children. If you want teach them, make another class. So I decided to leave with two children, two months old and four years old, to came to United States because we already lived in United States 50 years ago in Kentucky. And my husband was studying, and my first son born in United States. And I proud of, I had a great time in United States. That's why I choose my second home. Even United Nation gave us chance to stay in Geneva, but I didn't want to stay, only come to United States. Because of United States is free country, they have free speech and religious free, everything which it was in Iran before 2,000 years ago by Cyrus the Great was like that. And I came here, I left my country, I left my parents. My father was crying in airport saying, I don't think I cannot, I can be able to see you again. I said, no, father, this regime is going to go away. The time was all the hostage, they were there. And then we had all the airport was closed. But finally, we got out with two months old, four years old children because Islamic Republic was insulting education, insulting woman, just because I wanted to, just not to cover myself, my hair. I didn't want to tell me what to do because I wanted to be free. These people, they have no respect for women, not respect for any human beings, only they think about they, they are thief, they are murderer. I didn't see my father passed away, I couldn't go to Iran. My mother passed away, I didn't have chance to grieve. And I didn't see my, only I went to Sweden, I saw two of my sister, they came over there. That's not fair. We will suffer like that after 45 years. Only I see the TV, this regime are killing these people. And I tell myself, why I cannot do anything? Why they think we are in America, we forgot about them. But we want you, this is our home now. This is, we are American now. I have two daughter-in-law, they are American. My, to have grandchildren, they are American. Please help us. We love America, but listen to us. Why, I thought, is that just for oil? Is that politic? Is that just money? What happened to human beings? You are talking about animal shelter. I have two dogs. I know how the animals are, I love them more than even some human beings which they are in Iran. They are killing all the dogs because they said dog is dirty, you cannot bring them inside the house. They get the gun and they kill the animals, kill the dogs. So what do you think? And they don't care about our also. So I'm telling you guys, I cannot talk to my sisters because they shut down the internet. How they can do that? You don't hear about your sister or die, die tonight or tomorrow, are they alive? That, please do something. I'm here as 45 years, I put my suitcase over there by the wall. Tomorrow, I'm going to back home, but I never had this chance. This is my home. We all refuge, we all here, we are American now. Please help us. We are begging you. Forget about politic, forget about oil. Money is renowned today. I after, I am 70 years old, guys, here. I'm a teacher.
So there's a limit of three minutes per person.
I'm teacher, I, I'm preschool teacher right now. I'm teaching all the children. I love them so much, they are my kids. And because I was teacher, please help Iran. That's all. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, next speaker, please. All right, seeing no more requests to speak. Yeah, I will be voting for a second time to condemn the terrorist state of Iran, and I'll be praying for a revolution in the meantime, and that'll be, that straw boat will be held on December 13th. No, thank you. No pause, please. Did you want to say something, Councilman Brenner?
I wanted to ask Erin a question because what I actually said in my email to people after the last time was, can I, I can, as an individual council member, I can sign anything I want to sign without having to go through the whole process. So we as individual council members can sign a condemnation or the resolution or whatever we want to do right away, and then the process can continue so that, so I think, you know, that would, it's not a perfect solution, but it's a partial solution where we could do that immediately. Isn't that true?
Yes. Yes. Immediate.
So you can do that in your personal capacity?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would like to remind everyone that this isn't on the agenda for this evening, so we can't have a big discussion about this topic, even though we had a lot of public comment on it. It's not agendized, so the rest of the public didn't know there's going to be this type of discussion.
Okay. Thank you. We're now moving on to the public hearing items. We'll call a quick five-minute recess. Okay, on to item number 21. Steph.
Thank you, Mayor Maldon. Simone Juris, your community development director. With me is Melinda Wayland, who's our assistant planner. This item was continued from the October 25th city council meeting. This is the annual review for the zoning agreement for Sierra by the Sea. At the last council meeting, there was a resident that lived adjacent to one of the facilities that complained about smoking. We, the council continued the item for us to address that smoking complaint with the operator. I'm going to have Melinda talk to what the resolution is, and the operator is here to respond to it. We did go out and meet with the operator and the resident that did file the complaint, and there's an action plan that we put together. So let me go ahead and have Melinda kind of address the action plan. And if we could have that PowerPoint and switch it over to the action plan.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council, Melinda Wayland, Planning Division. So like Mr. Juris explained, the staff met out on the site with the operator, and we were able to come up with an action plan to address the smoking and check in with the neighbor to make sure that she was in agreement with the plan and liked the idea. So the best possible solution was moving the smoking to the garage and limiting the smokers to, to max at a time with the air filter, smokeless ashtrays, limited hours for the smoking, and also no permanent furniture in the garage, so it doesn't become like an additional living area. And the residents and the management on site were also reminded of the waste disposal rules. And the operator also sent out a letter providing contact information, which we did identify was part of the problem. Some of the neighbors were attempting to contact the residents at the facility and did not know who to contact for immediate response to situations that arise such as these. So the neighbors were sent a letter, and after our meeting with code enforcement and the operator, I was able to make contact with the neighbor, and she says the new smoking area is working well, and it's a much improved situation. And now all of the neighbors have good contact information. And also city staff reminded our code enforcement and, checked in with our code enforcement staff and administrative staff who answers the phone to remind them that these facilities do have smoking regulations in their zoning agreements. So the operator is here and available for questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, staff. Councilman Avery?
Yeah, my feeling on this is, these are businesses, and these rules were in place before, and then it just, obviously, there's multiple things that went wrong here in that time period. And the neighbors are trying to get help, and they're not getting it. There's really no one proactively reaching across the street, saying, how's it going? Are we okay? None of that. I have very little faith that this is going to change. And I, I really hope code enforcement is on this. And I hope you're right. I hope all, all of this is followed. But I'm telling you, I, my, I'm just speaking for myself, I think you'll see backsliding in this deal because it takes a lot of effort to manage these operations, a lot of effort. I know that. I'm familiar with a couple of them. And you have to be dedicated, you've got to have really good people. So I, I just, I'm not optimistic. And residents and the people in this neighborhood need to be defended against these issues that have been going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brenner.
So would this action plan also apply to places like the Dalia property?
No, this is just specific for this property.
Why not?
Because this, this agenda item is supposed, specific to this operator, and the problem was focused on this property.
But what I'm asking is, why do we not have a plan like this that applies to all group homes in our city? So that if we can get this to work, then it would just automatically be applied to every group home?
Well, that's something that we, the staff can consider, Councilmember Brenner. You know, we're working on an ordinance now for these facilities, so this is something that could be a model of some sort. We don't regulate smoking. We regulate smoking only in this particular instance because of the zoning agreement. But, you know, smoking is allowed on private, private property. So that's the other biggest issue that we have.
But is smoking allowed to go into the windows of the neighbors? Like, are they allowed to smoke out in the alley and have it go into windows neighbor, the neighbors' windows?
Unfortunately, smoking is allowed.
How, does that require another ordinance?
It does. It does.
And that could be addressed?
Correct.
By the future council?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Dixon.
Thank you, mayor. Sober Living by the Sea has other facilities in Newport Beach, correct?
That's correct.
Would you describe where they are?
Would you like me to put it?
Primarily in District One.
Yes, so the green dot indicates the open facilities. They're down to eight, or six open facilities, and a total of 43 beds.
Excuse me for interrupting, but are you saying that these blue are not occupied?
Correct. Those have been closed since the entering into the agreement in 2009.
So why do we keep them on the map? Would they ever be reoccupied?
Yes, so the zoning agreement allows a total of 204 beds. And they are at 43 beds, but it does allow them to have the additional beds. There's a limit on the number on the peninsula, and also, and then a different number up in the West Newport area, but a total of 204 beds is allowed by the zoning agreement.
Was this a special agreement after the series of lawsuits?
Yes, yes.
And that's why, really, to answer, Councilmember Brenner's, that's why there is a unique situation in terms of the...
For this particular operator.
Yeah. Okay, so how many are not, the, the green ones are the only ones that are occupied? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Have we, do we, now that we've kind of looked, now that we have looked into the enforcement issues, have you checked the complaints from neighbors on these ones that are remaining open?
Annually, we collect all data for complaints to code enforcement and police department. And the neighbor that showed up at the last meeting, we did not hear from her. We heard she had spoke directly to the operator in 2021. So we do keep a log of all the complaints to PD and code enforcement annually, and we report on it annually.
And so you're, let me just understand what you just said. There were no complaints? And even the woman who came last meeting was not on record as complaining?
That is correct.
Okay, so Simone, and how are we going to approach this differently going forward? So that we...
So we did, so in this particular case, there was an error in our internal process with code enforcement. This particular operator, their zoning agreement says they can't have those smoking complaints. And so our code enforcement staff has been reeducated on what this agreement is. And so if they receive further complaints, they will log it in, and they will track it. Typically, because we don't have smoking restrictions except our beaches and our parks, smoking is allowed on private property. So they routinely say we don't regulate smoking. They, this issue has been corrected with our staff.
Sorry, is this the only location, or these green dot locations, the only locations in Newport Beach where we regulate smoking?
Yes.
I did not know that. Okay, I'd like to hear...
Are there other facilities? I'll turn to the city attorney.
Well, we do regulate smoking within, you know, a certain distance from the beach and distance from parks.
On the private property.
Yeah.
When we're ready, I'd like to hear from the operator.
Okay, staff, feel covered all the bases?
Yes.
Great. I don't see any questions from the dice, so let's go, let's go to public comments first, then we'll close that and then hear from the operator. Any public comments on this item? Okay. Jim, also, I'd like to say you got amazing results, almost no money spent for great results in the election. Congratulations on that. Okay, public comments are closed. I think Councilman Dixon would love to hear from counsel.
Hello, my name is Julie Thorne from Sierra by the Sea. Thank you for having me back again. And I, I want to thank Melinda Wayland for all of the assistance that she has provided to us and to you guys for, for listening to us. I, I did send over an addendum to our action plan, so I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to read through it yet. But I did want to clarify a couple of things. The first thing is that we are not a group home. We are a subacute detox and residential treatment center. We offer medical services to patients. We are staffed by nurses, therapists, registered and certified counselors. We're not a group home, we're not a transient living facility, we're not a mental health, sober living. That is not what we do. I know that the name may sometimes kind of allude to that, but that was prior to, to any of the ownership now. So the, the services that we provide are regulated. We do everything in our power to not only maintain our compliance within the city of Newport Beach, but within the state, within the federal regulations. We are CARF accredited. So we, we have a lot of people that we answer to. And so I understand the frustration for the public and for you guys when it comes to other facilities and the complaints and the issues at hand. And I want you to know that they should have to answer to the same boards that we do. But unfortunately, they do not. And that is not, we should not be penalized for that. We work very hard for it. When our neighbor came forward last, last time, it was very upsetting for me. Because I, I had heard about the neighbor who had a baby and that we had a smoking issue. And so we've moved around at that property to try to accommodate, not only to accommodate her, but accommodate the other neighbors, you know, because the way that the houses are situated, they're very, very close together on Patrice. So we've, you know, we are always going to say, hey, okay, what can we do to make it better? What can we do to appease everybody, please everybody, and be the best that we can be? We strive to be a... We strive to be a gold standard in our field. And I understand, I truly do, the frustration of these other facilities that are popping up around the city. I do. But that is not what we do here. That is not what we do. We are professionals. I have, I'm a nurse. We have medical directors. We have registered nurses, licensed nurses. I mean, we are, we are fully, fully staffed there. Our property is never unattended. That was a question that I was asked the last time, was, "Do I live at the property?" No, I do not. I'm a medical provider. I come to work. We have other medical providers there. None of our staff lives there, which is actually a benefit. We are always staffed 24 hours a day by somebody who is credentialed to perform services for the clients that we serve.
May I ask a question?
Yes, first.
I'm happy, I'm pleased to hear that. Then it begs a question in my mind. Your medical facility, quasi-medical facility, but you allow smoking on your premises. You can't walk into a medical facility anywhere anymore and there's smoking allowed. Why do you allow smoking?
So, a lot of medical facilities do still have smoking and designated smoking areas to try to make sure that people that don't smoke are not, you know, subjected to secondhand smoke, of course. If we could say, "Hey, you know what? No smoking in any of our facilities," that'd be great. But unfortunately, we can't. The population that we serve, they are already overcoming a lot of other things. And if they're not ready to throw a cigarette away, we can't do too much about it, unfortunately. I wish that I could change that. But most, a lot of hospitals still have designated smoking areas. There's actually one right across the street from Patrice in that medical facility. It's against the wall, which that was, one of the neighbors was having, her, part of her issue was the smoking across the street as well. But that's a medical building. So, there are designated...
I know. I guess it just strikes me as strange that you're trying to help people be healthier and you condone smoking. So, have you done any outreach to your immediate neighbors?
Yes, ma'am.
And what does that, describe that, please?
So, what I have done is, I went personally and made sure that they had my personal contact information. I did send a letter. I put letters on all of the doors just to make sure. But I also went and went in person. Brought them a pointcetta. I gave them my business card. I wanted to make sure that they had no issue, knowing exactly who...
Did anybody have an issue?
None. None of them did. And they were, the only thing they were appreciative of is that I gave them my cellphone number and told them they could text me a picture if they had a problem. And I let them know that I can have someone from our leadership team, because we are, you know, we have our organizational chart, our leadership team at any of our facilities within 60 minutes. And I can personally attend to any or address any issue or concern they have within 24 hours, at any time, anything they have that could be a concern for them. So, I have not had any other neighbor who had any other question. I wanted to make sure that they were educated on the type of facility that we were.
All right.
And what...
Okay. All right. Thank you. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Duffield, do you have some questions?
Yeah, go fast. Just wanted to make sure I understand, you have a permit with the city of Newport, right?
I'm sorry, permit as in?
They permitted through us?
Yes, so, we entered into a zoning...
Yes. Okay, you're permitted with us, the city. So, the ones that we have trouble with are permitted with the state. So, we didn't, I probably would have, should have said that when we started out here. Because we very rarely have had any issues with our permitted homes. Very rare. And as you can tell, you guys are professionals. You're not, you're not a rehab home. You're, you're doing, I would guess, detoxing and things like that with people, which is very serious work. And it requires professionals versus the state ones where they just, it's a babysitting thing, you know, type of deal. So, I want to make sure we all understand that we've done very well with our city permit homes, that our state ones, which you've got to help us with, is the problem. Thank you.
Fair clarification. Thank you, Councilman Duffield. Okay, I think that we're done. Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, staff, anything else? Thank you. All right, is there a motion for this item? I'll move the item. Second by Councilman Duffield. Let's vote. Any requests to speak?
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, thank you. Jaime, good to see you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Maudun. Jaime, this is Simone Gerger's, Community Development Director. With me is Jaime Maria, Principal Planner. So, the item before you is incorporating the transfer of development rights into our local coastal program, which is in Title 21. We have this tool in our zoning code. We just didn't have it in our coastal zone. Our Coastal Commission did approve it. Now, it's before you to introduce it and go ahead and accept these changes. Jaime is here. You can do a further presentation if you'd like, or we could just answer questions.
I don't see any requests for more detail, so I think we'll go to public comments. Public comments on this item, please come forward. Great, seeing none, we'll bring it back.
I move the item.
I'm sorry, Councilman?
I move the item.
Okay, great. Second by Mayor Pro Tem Blom. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance, Title 4, Ordinance 2022-28, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, adopting Local Coastal Program Amendment, ELSI 2019-3, as modified by the California Coastal Commission, amending Title 21 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to the transfer of development rights. Councilmember Avery, if you can vote, please. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Hi, gentlemen. I think we all did our homework. Public comments on this item. Great, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Is there a motion? Move the item?
I'm sorry, isn't this a receive and file?
Oh, perfect. Good catch. Thank you so much. Even better. Received and filed. Okay, the next item I have a conflict on due to potential business interests, although I never ended up working with the company or I never took off on this avenue. I just refused myself to be safe. So, Mayor Pro Tem Blom will run this.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, Act 24.
Great. Again, good evening, council. Dave Webb, your Public Works Director, and Andy Tran, our Senior Engineer, who's the project manager of this project. Excited to be here tonight. This is the culmination of a long project, and you've been involved in this for some time. And this started way back when I was just joking with one of the council members back in 2007, when I started here, starting with Sunset Ridge Park and the need for, the citizens of West Newport wanted more facilities and recreational things on the west side of town, if you recall. Everything seems to be on the east. So, we started building parks, Marina Park, $40 million. We've done, Sunset Ridge Park was $13.5 million, of which this is a completion of that because if you're around at that time, Sunset Ridge Park got approved by the Coastal Commission. And at the time, we had a parking lot and a road going to the park to allow us to use the park and fully program it. With the wisdom of the Coastal Commission and then the concern with the conservancy and other reasons, they approved the park and we built the $13.5 million park, but we didn't build the parking and the road and the access to it. And their direction was, why don't you look across the street and build parking and a bridge over there? I don't know if that was the best choice at the time, but that's the choices that we were given. So, we, staff was put off on a direction and started going through that. And we've gone through grants. We have grants in this project. We have other things, transportation improvements and other things on that. So, I'm going to turn it over to Andy, who can actually talk about the award tonight. But that's kind of setting the table, the background of why we're here tonight. Recall, we had discussions on this about a bridge, about a, PBR wanted a dog park at one time. So, we've had a lot of public discussion on it, but tonight, I think we can land the plane if you're willing. So, Andy, why don't you give them a brief presentation on the project itself?
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, councilmembers. Again, I'm sorry, thank you. My name is Andy Tran. I'm a Senior Civil Engineer with the Public Works Department and also serving as the project manager for the Superior Avenue Pedestrian Bridge and Sunset View Park Parking Lot The project is located at the intersection of West Coast Highway or Pacific Coast Highway and Superior Avenue and Sunset Ridge Park, which Dave mentioned, is located on the west side of Superior Avenue. And again, as Dave mentioned, the park was constructed without an onsite parking lot. That's shown on the air, on the image on the top right there. Back in 2010, the park was originally designed with an onsite parking lot and an access road known as Bluff Road. But unfortunately, because of coastal permitting constraints, we were unable to construct the park with onsite parking lot. So, today, there is an existing parking lot on the east side of Superior Avenue. That parking lot has 64 parking stalls. And that parking lot was constructed by Caltrans in 1989 as a mitigation measure when Caltrans widened the highway. Caltrans was required to remove all the parking off the streets and moved it on to the parking lot. So, the 2010 Sunset Ridge Park EIR did identify needing 97 parking spaces to serve the park. Ideally, the city should provide 161 parking stalls to serve both the visitors to the beaches as well as the park itself. Our proposed improvements include constructing a new pedestrian bridge across Superior Avenue, which would greatly improve our safety and access to and from the park, and expanding Sunset View Park to increase passive park area. And lastly, improvements would include constructing a larger parking lot with a total of 129 parking stalls, which equates to a net gain of 65 parking stalls. So, now, if I can call in our recognition, it's Senior Services Director Sean Levin to go over our recognition of needs for this project.
Good evening, councilmembers. Yeah, so, when, like Dave mentioned, when the park was built, the youth sports groups, to their chagrin, we did not have a parking lot for the park. And part of that, when that came about, was we had to limit the number of fields they could use at one time. So, we had to limit, instead of two fields at one time, you can only use one. So, it essentially cut the use of the park that we built in half. So, that was the one issue. And that's, of course, due to the capacity. And then, access was another issue. Crossing Superior and PCH is, that's a big intersection right there. So, there were some safety concerns that the leagues had issue with as well. And also, you know, for games, it became, it became a little more difficult for grandparents, strollers, equipment, all the stuff for games. So, it's been underutilized due to the parking and the access. In addition to that, we started, we tried summer camps when we first opened. They did not work. Parents like to be able to drive up to the camp, walk up, sign their kids in, and take off and come back. So, walking across the street, it just didn't work. So, you know, with the bridge, we'd be able to bring back summer camps to that location. So, just kind of by the numbers, increasing games on the weekends. We spread out the games, so there has to be a half hour between the game slots. At the one field that we do have, because of the parking overlap across the street at Superior, so we'd be able to add four more games. That's 96 players. And then, the use of the second soccer field, that would be a new addition. So, that's, you know, with practices and games, it's 144 more players a week. And throughout the course of the year, that's about 600, almost 700 more hours of use on the field. So, in a nutshell, that's what it would increase for the community. And the other concern that we have throughout the city, kind of a larger picture, is there's more demand for field space than we have fields for the groups that want to use them. So, this would be a huge addition into our portfolio of fields available for use by the public. Thank you.
So, real quick, two cement questions, just, and I'm elaborating a little bit because we have had questions, how this all fits into the project. We have a bridge we're talking about. It's just not to serve the park. The map on the top is from Bicycle Master Plan. It talks about how it's already been integrated into our master plans for future circulation. If you could move forward, Andy, on the next project, actually, we'll skip that one, too. I'm going to move a little ahead because I know we're running late tonight. This is a, this is kind of the circulation element we're putting together on a big picture as we look at the park and how it plays in. The yellow is our pedestrian trails. The blue is our bike trail facilities. If you can go one more, please. Way down the road, as we work with circulation, we have to do things with the intersection of Superior and Coast Highway, as you know. If you recall back in 2019, when OCTA decided to take out the 19th Street Bridge, which affected our circulation element, we're still reeling from that. That intersection now is basically at an LOS, Level of Service E, projected to go to LOS F. Our master plan and circulation element only says we should go down to Level of Service D. So, we have future widenings we're going to need in this and future improvements. We've taken that into account as we build out this last park, Sunset View Park, to also accommodate future potential widenings that are going to address our circulation, our pedestrian, bicycle, and our vehicle circulation problems. That's going to be down the road and keep going. So, I just want to point that out because I have had questions. How come all of this plays in? That bridge also, you'll see, is a vital link to a master planned trail that's going to go through Banning Ranch and that both connect to the Coast Highway or the San Antonio River Trail. So, we can flip forward in that. This is, this is probably a potential projection in the future. We've talked about and we've kindly lightly said with the community, we have to plan this next bridge. For some of the circulation elements, we're looking at maybe building a bridge over Coast Highway, which would remove the crosswalks and add some other circulation benefits in the intersection that'll solve the capacity and the safety concerns we have that are related to the park but adjacent to it. So, we're also looking ahead at this. And those elements are built into this project so we can do this, should we be able to get the grant money and the future approvals on that. Just some background on that. So, I'm going to turn it back to Andy here, and he can conclude on the schedule and the cost.
Thank you, Dave. So, tonight, we are recommending the award of the construction contract. And with the award, we anticipate starting construction in early January. And the contract documents does allow for 320 consecutive working days, which would lead to a completion date in May of 2024. In regards to the federal, I'm sorry, in regards to the funding sources for the construction phase, this, it's going to be comprised of approximately $2.3 million of federal grant, about $2.9 million from our Circulation and Transportation Fund, and approximately $6.4 million from our Facilities Financing Plan, which would total $11.7 million. And for the total all-in project cost, which is comprised of about $3.3 million of soft costs, which includes environmental planning, permitting with our Caltrans and the Coastal Commission, preliminary and final design, as well as construction management, and about $10.5 million for construction contract with an 8% contingency, the total all-in project cost would come out to about $14.7 million.
And if I could, Andy, lastly, you know, we do have some concerns. People raise, big numbers raise eyebrows, like, "Wow, that's a lot of money." I put that in perspective. This has been in our FFP for a long time. And if you read through all the details in the staff report, we tried to identify that. If it was projected out today, it would be about a $13 million project. That didn't take into account all the inflation and the supply chain issues we've had. So, the project's roughly on task. We had a great council working group, as you know. Three of our council members guided us on this. We went back and did value engineering. We took out about a half million dollars in costs. Unfortunately, we couldn't get all of the inflationary costs out of it. But the project's been there a long time. We know this number. And why I reference that, I just mentioned Sunset Ridge Park across the way in 2014, $13.5 million, without the road and the parking lot. Marina Park was $40 million. Our projects are big dollars. We just spent a lot on our fire station. For the community, it says, one person I know very well said, "Boy, a $10 million bridge." And I said, "It's not just a bridge. It's the Sunset View Park and the parking. There's a lot more to it." The bridge is $3.1 million of this, of which we have a $2.8 million grant from OCTA. So, it's really the FFP's completing Sunset View Park, the parking lot, and we have transportation money in here because we're widening and preparing for future capacity issues and things like that. So, it's kind of complex, big number, but again, I think it's within reason. So, I'll leave you with that. We appreciate your recommendation for approval on this thing.
Excellent. Thanks, staff. That's a long project that you guys have been working on. We really appreciate it. Councilmember Avery?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
The number is, you know, nonetheless, it's, it's a little daunting. And I think it's really important, I, I was involved in working with staff on this. And, you know, I thought, guys, wow, that's a lot of money. And, but when you, so I had to, and I hope the people that are concerned and the public, we need to make a, we need to be clear about the benefits of this project, what it's doing. It's, it's, there's like several multiple benefits that are going to accrue on this. And it's also, in my view, a look toward the future. I mean, Banning Ranch will happen, and this will be a really good access point to, to reach Banning Ranch. And the, the mobility of it, bicycles, solving for no stairs. So the ADA aspect of it on the, both bridges, if the second one happens, but certainly the first here, is, is incredible. So the, the sports activity park that we've already built, that, you know, the use is impacted by the fact that there's no access to it, or at least easy access to it and, and parking. So we're, we're taking care of a lot of things here. And I think a line item of each benefit, what, you know, what it's going to mean to our residents. I mean, this is going to sort of turn this into an area where there'll be parking that people can go to the beach and go across the bridge and down, and not go across the crosswalk. And if you spend any time at all around that intersection of Coast Highway and Superior, it's a monster. And it's, I think it's dangerous for people using the crosswalks. And then, of course, the time it takes to get across, and the ADA rules about the, the timing for the lights, make it even longer to get across in terms of cars waiting. So just taking that out of the equation just speeds up traffic and really helps those intersections which are, you know, really backed up in the summertime. So altogether, I've come around, I looked at all this, and I tend to be positive about projects because when you look back, almost invariably, five years, 10 years, and you go, wow, it's a good thing we did that then. And because of what it would, look what it would entail now. Not only just cost, but permitting, and life just gets more complicated. So I think we, we have the money, there's a lot of grant money here. And so we should, I believe we should strike on this and look toward a future that is going to be much better in this particular area for multiple reasons, for residents that want to access the beach, access the sport parks, access Banning Ranch, and just provide, in general, more parking for all those activities. So I'm, I'm going to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. A couple of questions. It is a very expensive bridge. Fortunately, it is a bridge to somewhere. To, we built a park and no one could come. I just wonder, are we, we need to coordinate with the, with the plans, the conceptual plans with Banning Ranch. I hope we do that. I'll be long gone, but I hope we do. So the bridge and the parking and the interconnectivity of the park and Banning Ranch, and you had the map there showing the bicycle path, I guess to Brad's point, too. I mean, it does help justify. But what we haven't really heard, Sean, do we have any data that people, more teams would use this? Do we really know that for a fact? I mean, we've heard, I've heard anecdotally, I've heard this for a number of years.
It'll more than double.
Why do you know that?
We have a demand for it. I mean, the groups, all the groups want more field space, and we only allow one field to be used right now because of the parking. So the minute we're able to allow that other field, it'll be used.
Now, are these, all, all Orange County residents, are these Newport Beach residents who primarily are on these teams? I guess it's a mixture of all kids.
Well, the vast majority are from the Newport Mesa School District. That's where all of them, we allocate based on the, the leagues that are, they're there. And so they're all Newport or Coastal Mesa for the most part.
Okay. All right. But it is more than helpful. That's not a good word to use, helpful, that the grant money. And that FFP money's been sitting there for quite some time for this project?
Yes, it's been, I believe, if I remember right, it was 2013, we looked back, it was in the FFP. The council, prior to you, way back when they started putting FFP together, this project was put in there. And we kept a balance as we've gone, and we put inflation back on, but we only calcled it up by two, two and a half percent. We've seen much more of that the last couple of years with the inflation, so.
Now, I forget, do we have to go through coastal for this?
This required, we did go to coastal because of the bridge, and it touched, it's in the coastal zone, and it touched the original Sunset View Park, Sunset Ridge Park. And they required, if we did anything there, we'd have to come back to them versus our own coastal permitting. So we did have an item on there.
All right. So they know that this, all these years later, 10 years later, or more?
They actually, we put it back on them because, as they are, they're difficult to work with. And we said, you approve our park, and you told us to go across the street and build a bridge and a parking lot. So here we are. It'd be really a shame if you didn't approve our project. And, and to your last comment, we will work with Banning Ranch. In fact, it's funny, I talked to George Basie today, I just wanted to get an update, and I think I'd probably need to talk to the city manager and some folks and get a meeting to kind of see where they're going. Because, as you know, that property's about to be sold to a state, another state agency I'd heard, learned today. So we want to get to kind of connect on them. Newport Beach surrounds Banning Ranch, as you know, and we probably should have some say in how it works. Our master plans need to fall into with line with that, so.
So it's not going to be, the county never took action on it?
I don't know where the county is in it, but I, they'd mentioned the sale was going to be closed in the next couple of weeks.
To the state?
Yep.
Oh, interesting. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so Brad, you have a bridge. I drive under it every day. Was that $10 million? No, it wasn't. Okay, so isn't there a way we could borrow it? Maybe you?
You'd need to stretch it a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, stretch it a little bit.
But you see where I'm going?
Bring it back in the morning.
Your, your bridge seems very affordable. What happened to our bridge? It's longer?
Our, our bridge is pretty, this bridge is a pretty humble, you know, truss style bridge. And it's about as cheap as you could get. That's what I was looking for, the cheapest bridge that would work.
Okay.
And, but it's, it's not pretty. I'll admit it.
Yeah, I don't mind it. But, okay.
Well, cheap bridges, that's what we want.
Just for the record, the bridge portion is 3.1 million of the whole project thing.
And I, I'm going to note that, right? And got 2.8 in funding for it, so let's call it a $300,000 bridge and feel pretty good about that. All right, let's go out to the public for comments on this.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Blom, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I see from the staff report you have, I think it's a seven-part recommendation you're being asked to approve. The first part of it is referencing a resolution that the council passed apparently three years ago for mitigated negative declaration. And then the second part is to approve the project plans and specifications. I think we've heard plans have changed. They're not in the agenda packet, of course, which is very thin. I don't know if they're the same ones that were referenced in that resolution from three years ago. We heard there was going to be a dog park at some time, not now. I'm wondering if interested citizens have any access, or is there a link to where they can actually see what the current project plan is that you would be approving tonight? That's question one. Question two, although I realize we're not allowed to ask questions, is we heard reference here to, that there had been a council working group overseeing this. I'm wondering if the public could know who the working group was. I don't recall it ever being appointed by the council. And then, speaking of the money, you are approving a contract apparently for about $12 million. We've heard $3 million is for the bridge. So I'm assuming the remaining $9 million is mostly for the parking lot improvements? Not sure. Certainly is a discrepancy between $3 million and $12 million. And one thing I'm especially not certain about is the contractor is being asked to expand and complete the passive park area at the Sunset View Park. You wouldn't think a whole lot of improvement is needed for a passive park. So are they going to be grading the hill? What is the contractor doing with the passive park area of Sunset View Park? And how much of the $12 million does it take to make those improvements? So those are questions you might want to ask. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. And like in any construction project, I'm sure this one's gone a little bit over, over the course of when it was originally planned. And I think, you know, to, to jump on costs, as I started looking through this, you know, because any large number is staggering. But when you start looking at what it takes to do a major infrastructure project in the city, and I think we're about $3.5 million in just soft costs getting it designed, engineered, and set, you know, we look at about another 6.3, and then the bridge itself, you know, I think we start finding out where those dollars are getting spent. And I believe a portion of that 14 is actually contingency going on top of what will most definitely be overages by contractors. But let's bring it back up to the dais. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. But just to follow up on your point, Dave or Andy, would you just give explicit history of the cost increases that we've experienced as we've been looking at this over the last few years? In terms of the inflation-driven costs, et cetera?
I don't know if we could do that. I do know that the project, as you know, has changed a little over time. We went through the PBNR. One time, we were talking about an active component. We talked about a skateboard park, then we talked about a dog park. We've moved the plans back and forth a little bit to adjust that. We brought those concepts back to council. If you recall, we had a bridge in there. We went through some design modifications on the bridge. Most of it's been soft costs, but as we've gotten into the construction portion of it, there, there is a large grading operation that has to happen because it's, the area, as you know, is a, it's a denuded vegetated hill that needs to be graded out, and a lot of that material is about 7,000 yards that have to be removed in order to make room for the additional parking. The other costs that are added to Mr. Mosher's comments, because it's a passive park, it's not complete yet, it's basically dirt. We've got to basic put-in irrigation, retaining walls, landscaping, electrical systems. There's retaining walls in there, there's connections on sidewalks and things like that. All that's in the base costs outside the bridge, just to build a park. And that's, some of that cost, I always thought, when I was talking to Andy, I said, do you remember the cost of Sunset Ridge Park prior to the road and the parking lot removal? There was, it was a bigger number. My head was like 16 million or 15 million. We didn't spend, we spent 13.5 because all that cost got taken out. Some of that cost is coming back in here. So it's moved over time. And then when we get, as, we're all aware of the inflation, we've been watching our bids go up, and the supply chain issues. I, I don't know exactly on that number, but it, but substantial. I, I'm guessing it's, it's, could be up towards $1 million. I mean, because we were thinking 13 million, here we are at 14 all in. So I don't know exactly to answer your question. I do know that's kind of the summary of where the costs have come from.
But the longer this takes, it's kind of, the costs are going up as we speak.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and these costs, these projects, unfortunately for Newport Beach, we're in coastal zone, this is regulatory nightmare areas. Everything we do is just a lot of permits, and that's why there's the approval of the two contracts tonight. We got to hire Chambers Group, they're our environmental group, to do monitoring. We have to look for Indian sites, whale bones, you know, all this stuff that comes along with the project. I'm serious, it's the cost of a project is a lot to do. So we have experts, we need to be there on site to monitor. That cost goes into the project. And again, it all adds up to the bottom line in this. Just if I could, for Mr. Mosher's comment, those plans are always available at Public Works. There's a plan set here tonight. We always provide the council. If you want to bring that out, we can bring it out in public and look at that. We provide it in here, and I believe there might even be one at the clerk's office.
I believe we brought the clerk's office one down here, right?
So, so we always have plans available should the public want to see them.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Councilmember Avery.
Just briefly, I just want to circle back to, I know we're already working on it in terms of really taking the pieces of the project in a form that the public can access to see what, what's going into it. And that it's, it's, it's much more there than just, people just think a bridge and they see that number. And I think it's important for us to, to put that out there and the benefit to the community. So, so I think people can go online at least and see those things. I mean, there's safety, there's parks, it's, there's a lot there.
It's a big thing to unpack. It's hard to do in a short period. I'm happily, spent a lot of time on it. I think we tried to lay that out in the staff report. If people would read that, they'd see it. Remember, there's a component to the intersection improvement. That's why the circulation money's in here, because we're actually doing portions of that advanced work. We have to do that anyway. We're going to have to widen the intersection, we're going to have to do improvements. Because at least your council policy doesn't allow us to have intersections of E or F, they have to be D. And the only way we can do that's probably add a lane or take the crosswalks out or make it operate better. So we're, we're doing some of that. If we're going to plan for a park, we don't want to have to do something twice. So we, we've included that, some of that in this project, which it, it potentially could happen in the future. We don't know when that project will come forward.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. So just a couple of quick words on this. I'm a huge fan of infrastructure projects because I think they truly are how you give back to the future generations of the city. It's a lot to debate up here, and always the costs are, are staggering. But I think as we look back on any of this, we're always thankful every time we look around this city and see every park and every new accessible piece, and every time we spend a little bit more money on those streets to make them just that much quieter, and it's been unbelievable. So, you know, I'm a huge fan of this. I'm a huge fan of continuing to reinvest in our city in these types of things that aren't just for one generation, but for many. So seeing no other comments up here, let's.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Dixon.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Avery.
Motion carries 6-0.
Staff, would you like to announce your conflicts?
It's item number 26 is the conflicts. We're on item 25.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. You're right. Item number 25, also human resources, but this is hiring specialists.
Right. Good evening, Mayor Muldoon, councilmembers. My name is Barbara Salveni. I'm the Human Resources Director. I'm here with Chief Lewis tonight to talk about police recruitment and retention and some challenges that the city is experiencing. And one of the ways that we feel we could address this and really expedite the process and get our current vacancies filled would be by adding an HR specialist position. And we do have a PowerPoint that we can go through, or we can answer questions, whatever you prefer.
Chief, is this your last time addressing the council?
We still have one more meeting, so, but I'm hoping this will be the last.
It's probably what we'll ask. If you would like to give a little presentation just to get out of your system, you may. Otherwise, I don't see any requests. Maybe you could just educate us a little bit on why I think it's important for the department.
Certainly. And what we have right now, and we've talked about this before, I know, in, in other conversations about the police recruiting pool right now, in essence, it's become a puddle, like a lot of other industries. And police recruiting is particularly difficult because of the, the background standards and the lengthy process that it requires us to actually get police officers hired, onboarded in training, and actually on the street. So to me, the most important thing when it comes to police recruiting is, is number one, volume, is seeing a lot of candidates and, and the speed in which we do it. Because we're in an environment right now where we're not the only one that's in this situation. We're looking for high-quality candidates. We have not and will not change or lower or modify our hiring standards. And so we're looking for a very, very small group of people. There are also other reputable police departments that are competing with us against us, as well. So the importance for us is by adding this additional support from HR, it will allow us to test on a more frequent basis, monthly testing, which is huge for us. Because if you look at what it takes to hire a police officer, if even a month behind puts us at a disadvantage with competitive candidates, particularly when we have surrounding agencies that are, that are good quality organizations looking for those, looking for those types of candidates. So if we can continue to get quality people into the pipeline and see them on a monthly basis and get them into our system quicker, then we have better results. And we think that we can address these vacancies that we have in a much quicker fashion and get to our numbers to where we are, staffed at our budgeted positions. And then we also have, as part of this, authorization for the city manager to give us a position to overhire. So in essence, what we would do is our, our budgeted number is 148. We would have, ideally, in ideally situation, we would have 148 police officers that are budgeted in that, there, that are hired in the process in various forms. They could be in academy, they could be in training. But then when we see additional quality candidates with this monthly recruiting coming in, that we don't have to turn them away. we don't have to turn them away. We can, we can hire them and that's what, knowing that we're going to have some attrition on both ends, either through retirements and then also people that don't make it through our training program. So this is, we think we can, we know that we can do this and get to that number with the increased frequency of testing. Why we haven't done this in the past is simply a bandwidth issue for HR and that's what this additional staff is requested to address.
Very good. Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you. And I'll just say right up front, I'm very supportive of this because as Councilmember Duffield and Councilmember Brenner and I have been talking about police resourcing now for quite some time and more boots on the ground. And I commend HR and the chief and the city manager for identifying, I finally, we finally understood why we are not at full complement of our budgeted positions. So what would you say typically we're about four or five or 10, I've heard as number 10 is over the years that we've been through attrition and retirements and injuries and workers' comp, we could, we could be down as many as 10?
It is possible. It's rare for us to be about, to be down 10. It has happened, I know that has happened in the, in the past. We are always floating at least five vacancies and sometimes seven is probably about more consistent across the board. Out of 148 and a lot of that, a lot of those numbers again are ones that are, that are either unplanned. We have, you know, people moving out of states and things like that that we hadn't, we hadn't expected. And trying to get to that number, we get there and all of a sudden something happens that we're just not able to get to the overhire position without this, without this frequency of, of testing now. So to answer your question, yes, I mean, we're right now, as we sit here, about seven, eight, and I think that, but we also have, you know, three that I just gave job offers to last week. So we're getting there, but there's been a frustration at that number being about five, six under consistently over, over many, many years.
Well, and it was really a revelation to find out that it was really a, a human resources staffing issue that created the bottleneck for you. And so that's why I'm supportive. And also, we've been talking for months, for a long time, of having more enforcement and we hear it all the time. And here we haven't even been operating at full staffing levels because we can't process the applicants and the testing through an expedited process. So I'm very supportive, I appreciate the creativity in coming up with this solution. And then to give you a little reserve with about four positions, I think we could afford it with our significant surplus and I am totally supportive. And in my last meeting on the Newport Beach City Council, it gives me great pride to always be supportive of the police. We've gotten five more police since I've been on the council and I've been very grateful. And this will, I think, send a powerful message to our community that we have great police, but now we're giving them the resources that we fully budgeted for. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll let you make the motion if you like.
Oh, well, when we get there.
Okay, great. Mayor Protam Blom.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to second Councilmember Dixon on how important this is from a multifaceted approach. I think we are in one of these periods where, you know, we really constricted well because we were unsure about what the economy was going to look like. And we did that in a very fiscally sound way that maybe as the world has changed and inflation has skyrocketed, we have lost some of the buying power that we had previously in the city. And I think that's something that no one here would ever stand for, knowing that either police or fire does not have the buying power and really, truly, our entire city staff. It's very important for us to make sure that we have the ability first to recruit and then to retain. And so I think this is a great beginning to a multifaceted approach on how we're going to make this work better for both our police and fire departments and our city staff entirely. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Protam Blom. Councilman Brenner.
As I have been for the last four years, I'm always in support of our police and our fire department and I'm excited about this possibility. We started out talking to Grace about adding people to the force and came upon this problem that looks like it's really going to help. So I'm very much in support of this and I'd like to second Diane's motion when she makes it.
Great. Okay, public comments on this item?
For purposes of the momentum here, I make a motion to support the recommendation. On the table.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Public comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, members of the council. My name again is Jim Mosher. I support the item also. However, the fiscal impact is mentioning only the cost of the specialist to be hired. And I would be curious as a citizen to know if it has been the pattern in Newport Beach to expect roughly five vacancies in the police department. Have our budgets for the last many years been assuming that that would be the case? Or have we been budgeting for full employment in the police department? If not, will this require a increase in future budgets? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, great question. Barbara, do you want to?
I actually could take that if that's all right. Yes, more of a budget question. But we, we do budget typically full staffing. We have, I will say during, particularly during the pandemic years where we did do some adjustments, where we went in and put a vacancy factor in specifically for, I think, about two years. But in this current year's budget, we are budgeted at the full staffing, so there wouldn't be additional budget that would be necessary once we get to full staffing.
Excellent. Okay, great, we've got a motion and a second. Let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, and thank you. And this is the item where we have a staff recusal?
That's right. So the city clerk, city manager, and city attorney will be recusing themselves because the item potentially impacts our personal finances. Thank you.
Thank you. So this last item impacts all employees, whether it's in the form of a side letter or an amendment to an employee agreement or an amendment to the key management compensation plan. The only part of this report that I'm required to report on under state law relates to your executive employees, so that's going to be the appointees who have recused themselves, the fire and police chief, and then the department heads that are covered by the key management compensation plan. And for all of those employees, the proposal is to have a reduction in the contribution to the retirement pension by one and a half percent for calendar years 2023 and 2024. And that concludes my oral presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great. Any public comments on this item?
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. The city attorney just explained to us that the three employees had to recuse themselves because it affected their personal finances. The HR director just told us it affects all employees' personal finances, so I'm just curious what is the nuance of the law that these three need to recuse themselves and the other city employees don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Fair question.
Sure. So to the extent I am part of the executive management team that's covered by the key management plan, and I am not going to receive a unique financial benefit from what the council votes on above and beyond what my co-executive managers are going to receive, I am allowed to present on the matter. And there's an exception to that in the code of regulations.
Otherwise, couldn't, probably couldn't do anything.
Go under the table.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, any request, any comments on this from the dais?
I'll make a motion on this.
Okay, is there a motion? Yeah, move by staff report, move by Mayor Protam Blom, is there a second? And seconded by Councilman Duffield. Okay, let's vote. Okay, great, thank you, Barbara. Madam Clerk, please re-announce it for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council either this meeting or the previous meeting may be, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Thank you. Are there any motions to reconsider? Seeing none, we'll be adjourned this evening in memory of former Mayor Evelyn Hart. Councilwoman Dixon will do the honors.
Thank you so much, Mayor Muldoon. Tonight, we adjourn in the memory of someone who was very special to those of us here on the dais and many, many throughout Newport Beach, the honorable Evelyn Hart. Evelyn passed away on Wednesday at the age of 91. She was a 71-year resident of Newport Beach who was deeply involved in civic life and community service for many decades. Evelyn served 16 years before term limits on the city council, including two terms as mayor. She has said that her proudest accomplishments on the council were protecting open space and view corridors such as the Back Bay View from PCH and Jamboree. She was the key negotiator on behalf of the city in the 1985 settlement agreement with John Wayne Airport, which has helped protect our neighborhoods from airport impacts to this day. In later years, Evelyn stayed active in the ongoing effort to limit airport growth. In the mid-2000s, she was instrumental in raising critical funds for the construction of Oasis Senior Center and today, the Evelyn Hart Event Center at Oasis bears her name in honor of that accomplishment. She was named Newport Beach Citizen of the Year in 2007. In recent years, she was involved with a number of charitable groups, including the Youth Employment Service and Someone Cares Soup Kitchen. She served as a governor's appointee to the State Board of Behavioral Sciences and Regional Water Quality Control Board. In addition to volunteering with the Newport Beach Police Department, she was a founding member of Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter and helped raise funds for the construction of the new shelter, as we discussed this evening. Evelyn is survived by her beloved husband of 65 years, John Hart, and many descendants, including great-great-grandchildren. And information on services is still pending. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned.